Bright red is on.
I'd like to welcome everybody to the August eighteenth monthly work session. Our first topic is on growth management. Superintendent?
And I'm going to turn it over to Mickey Ryan, or I'm sorry Kathy Eba, I didn't know where the arrow was pointing, who will start us off and we'll have a discussion of our growth report.
Good morning. As you know, starting last October, we started a discussion about where is growth headed in Sarasota County and how will that growth and development impact our schools? This is now our third meeting, if you can include the October meeting. The second one was in June where we discussed the growth implications and reviewed development, current development patterns, where is development happening in Sarasota County and what does that influence our ability to provide educational services for our students moving forward? Today, what we want to do is now translate that into a financial discussion. How do we pay for the schools that we need to be able to provide and expand? It's clear from our discussion in June that we will need to expand services and that we're going to need to add new capacity to our existing educational service provision. So in that, what we're looking for from today from the board is some direction for us as we move forward. We have two public information sessions scheduled for September second for the community to ask us questions about this and then in September, at your next workshop, we will have a public, the public will have a chance to provide us input about where they feel the study is moving and then we'll make a final decision about it in October. But in order for us to move into those next three meetings, we need some direction from you all as to where you think we should take this study. Where is the growth happening? Where do you want to see us move and how do we pay for those? We have a number of options in terms of paying for it that we're going to talk about today, but we need some specific direction from you today about where you would like us to focus our efforts as we move forward. So at that, I'm going to turn it to Steve Tyndall and Nilgan Camp from Tyndall Oliver, who have been conducting the study for us on behalf of our consultants, Tyndall Oliver, and let them explain further and then Scott will discuss the financial implications.
Okay. We have a presentation that gives a brief background and then goes through the findings and the next steps. And as Kathy mentioned, the purpose of the study primarily is to look at the growth levels and locations and growth management issues. And as part of it, just as important as the come up with the funding plan for the plan. So we presented the preliminary results in June. Today, we have some updated results on those more refined results. And then as part of the, one of the funding options, we also calculated the impact fee levels. So we'll go through that as well with that.
I'm going to go through the planning findings and then Nilgan's going to go through some of the impact fees in terms of the analysis. To start out with, just to kind of remind you, we presented before, we start out with the population and population projections. We project housing units. We have tremendous amount of long-term data about housing units and then the student generation rates for each one of the different housing types. From that, we develop both the elementary student projections, the middle school student projections and the high school student projections. So that's the process as far as the demand side and coming up with, you know, what we need to plan on in terms of growth. This is just a graphic. It's kind of a good news, bad news, and this is the whole state of Florida. The state of Florida was in a huge growth mode. If you go further back than this, it was three or four or five percent down to two percent and now you're projecting to grow at about one percent. Your base is getting bigger. So when you say one percent growth, if you're twice the size, you've got the same number of people moving in and the same kind of activity, but the base has grown, so your growth rate's gone down. So you had to be careful with when we talk about percent changes in growth and getting a feel of how fast you're growing in terms of absolute numbers. But these are the projections we're using in terms of planning your future growth. And this comes from Beaver projections and we just don't use Beaver for Irby County. We go back and look at long-term trends and what they projected and how they're projecting and then we compare that and do our projections. The magical number we're doing for the twenty-year plan through twenty twenty forty is sixty thousand housing units. We felt comfortable with that. Just to go on record, your transportation plan, wanted to be sure, and most of them do this, they use the higher generation rate that Beaver provides to where they don't, make sure they don't underestimate and they really can lay out a plan. So for planning purposes, they actually use eighty-four thousand. The actual highest generation rate, just to show you the range of projected development in Inwin County is up to a hundred and fourteen. So we're using the sixty for our planning purposes, which we think is reasonable for the use for planning. This is the actual plan development. One of the things we did is we just didn't take what the planning, the long-range plan projected in terms of the locating, the eighty-four thousand and we're locating sixty. We actually went through each one of your developments. We determine whether it's only done a zoning, whether it's done a land use amendment, whether it's platted. You know, if it's got some activity going out of the ground to give us an idea of trying to project out in ten-year increments where the growth is actually going to occur, how we assign those units. So, and this is a picture of your plan development. And of course, you're sitting there with Northport with a big question mark in terms of how the economy will go back and forth and all of a sudden it'll get geared up and potentially fill a lot of platted lots that don't need a DRI or some zoning development to do it. They can issue those permits. So we are also considering and making sure we're considering that effect or potential in terms of development. But these are the locations of the projected development.
Excuse me. Does this take into account the developers that are offering us land and possibly even building schools? Because there are two developers that are going to be doing that.
Well, once you pass impact fees, and I'm not a lawyer and I've been told over and over, but I work with them very closely in terms of my data and information. Once you pass an impact fee, most of the time if developer donates land, they're going to get a credit. So it's just accelerating of, you know, the revenue and then you get the money over time. Now, if you're negotiating non-credit development, it's pretty rare in the state of Florida for you to get developers to pay, donate the land and then say, by the way, if you pass an impact fee, I'm not going to ask you for it. So.
So if we don't pass an impact fee, then the developer is allowed to?
Yeah, as part of a condition of approval, they can donate land. You've got to be, I mean, that's a legal issue in terms of how you negotiate your development agreements. Yes, you can do that as a condition of approval, especially if you've got a good process for concurrency and things that show that you're creating a safety welfare issue. So for our analysis that we would do though, we had to be very careful in terms of the alternative revenues and how you would estimate what percentage of what you're going to get is going to be donated without any concession from the development community.
So there's nothing in here?
No, we've not, the one thing we're going to do is get some guidance from you before we start writing up how you're going to fund this in terms of, if you're not going to consider impact fees at all, then that would be something we'll write up in terms of, well, if you're not going to adopt impact fees, then you probably really need to tighten up on concurrency and prop share and a whole different set of tools that you'd use in terms of trying to negotiate with the development community.
What I was looking at is how much less would we need to raise if we knew that someone was going to give us land and someone was going to build a school for us? So that's what I'm looking for because I have figures in here that I can looking at, but that doesn't include land that would be given to us or schools that would be developed for us.
Well, we'll definitely make a note of that and see if we can write something up to give you a general sense of what the ranges of things that might occur if you could negotiate those types of things.
I know there's one developer who's willing to build a K-12 school for us. So, you know, and that's why I'm wondering if, how do we take all that into account?
I don't know if this is a true statement to say that there's a developer willing to build a K-12 school for us. We're talking very early stages about what an agreement might look like relative to land. Right now, your land bank in its broadest sense, and we'll talk about that in a little bit, but your land bank includes one piece of property in the Lakewood Ranch area that you already have a formal agreement to get access to that property. So that's figured into kind of what the land bank looks like, but that's the only one.
But we're looking at Thomas Ranch also.
Yes.
And that's the one that, this is just, I didn't mean to start a discussion about this when I started talking to this person, but this is what happened. And that's why I found out that they might even be willing to build schools for us. And that has to come into account when we look at this.
Although it would come with an expectation, I believe, and we're actually, Kathy and I are going to sit down with them in about two weeks and we're going to review a draft of an agreement before we meet with them. But that agreement, the basis of that agreement, at least in part, we believe is going to be impact fee credits. And if there aren't impact fee credits, then what is the compensation for that property? So it's a little early to talk about that particular one because we haven't even seen a draft of the agreement yet. But at least early on, our understanding is it would come with an expectation of an impact fee credit, if there was an impact fee.
Just to tail off with Ms. Zucker, are you guys in conversations with other developers to help you come up with that? I mean, it sounds like you're preliminary speaking to them or is that the next step to kind of tail off what she was talking about?
Kathy, chime in here. Certainly the Thomas Ranch, West Villages area that Caroline just mentioned, yes. In fact, we have a meeting scheduled with them contingent on seeing a draft of the agreement that's supposed to come next week or the week after. The Lakewood Ranch property is a done deal. There's already an agreement that the board has voted on to accept that piece of property. Those are the two that are on the radar today.
But in the position of the West Villages project or the Thomas Ranch project, there would be an expectation that somehow there would be compensation back to them. So either it would be through impact fee credits, if we had impact fee, or it would be another form of return compensation. So it's not that the developer is looking to build and provide us a piece of land without compensation. They are looking at compensation for that property.
Then could you explain to me what compensation they could look for?
Well, that's, I'm looking at art for a second, but that's part of why we're waiting to see the draft. Their attorney is working on a draft of the property and how the property would be provided to us. But we could be required, if we don't have impact fees, which would be the first way to compensate them, they would get credit for those, for the property value. We would have to pay for the property, we could have to pay for the property outright. Other opportunities that, and these are not necessarily things we're talking about, but could be available if we had a property that they would be interested, that would have some sort of equal value to the property that they're giving. We could make a land swap. But somehow, if there isn't impact fee credit or if the impact fee credits weren't enough to compensate for the entire property, then we would have to look for additional compensation. The developer is not looking to just give us the property.
I wish this had been taken care of before this meeting because it seems that there's a piece hanging out there and we're making a decision and there's still a piece out there.
Understand though that, and Steve and I have had some dialogue about this, property, the cost of property is really the least of your worries, the least of our worries because we figured that property is probably ten percent or less of the cost of a school construction project. The real big dollars that you read about are in vertical construction. So even if you had, almost regardless of the outcome of how do we pay for the property, the issue becomes the cost of vertical construction. Property is, as I said, less than ten percent of the equation, I think is.
I'd be honest with you, I work all over the state and I've been doing this for thirty years and I, to be honest with you, maybe I don't remember a developer forking out that kind of money to build schools. They'll donate land for fire stations and ask you to build it because they need one built and they'll donate land for, they may donate land or accelerate it for you to build it in their location, but for them to build a school, I'm much familiar with, and I'll go back and check. I'll ask our staff if they've ever been involved with a development and actually built the school. I mean, it's a big chunk of money. That means it's usually not something that's.
I would wager to guess that if we didn't have something like impact fees, that a developer would be less inclined to even donate that land to us. But, I mean, it would basically be an offset to impact fees if we pass impact fees.
I've seen one case, I think it was in Brevard County, where there was an agreement to do, to actually build and construct a charter school with some kind of contractual requirement and it become very awkward after a few years in terms of it having to stay open or not stay open. But that's the only time I've seen a developer actually get into the actual construction or providing us services when they were trying to negotiate a, because they actually had an issue with, the schools weren't available. It wasn't, pretty well wasn't an option. Somebody had to build a school and they were pushed into having to do something. I don't remember one case of the developer actually getting involved. But I'm saying, I may be wrong. Well, we'll call around and find out. What's, you know, if there's anybody out there, this actually got developers constructing schools for the school boards. I'm not familiar with it. So this is where we looked and tried to develop a locational projection for where the growth is actually going to occur. The next slide shows you kind of the, tries to give you a picture of the impact each one of those developments may have on numbers of students they would generate. And what you're seeing there is two major clusters, one in the south and one in the center with one up north. And so when you see our projections, don't be surprised when we show a tremendous demand showing in that part of the county. Usually what happens in most of our waterfront communities is the waterfronts don't have a lot of students moving in, don't have a lot of new development with needing, and what you see is a layer just outside of that boundary where, and it's just about where you were showing this. So this is very common to see this kind of intense development, you know, occurring in a geographic area in a county because of the development patterns and the history of your prior development. This is just to show you numbers, yes.
Just a quick question. Looking at the South County, the Inglewood, Venice, over to Northport area that has all the orange and red dots, how would this impact our interlocal agreement with Charlotte County? Would it affect it at all? Because, I mean, are we looking at elementary school and then sending off our students, which of course we all know I'm not particularly happy about, to Charlotte County? How would that impact Charlotte County and our agreement with Charlotte County?
It wouldn't affect our agreement with Charlotte County. When we did this study, we accepted the school zones as they are currently. So the school zones that are south of Minnesota Beach Road, which are currently part of that interlocal that we have with Charlotte County, were not necessarily considered. We accepted that they had the capacity that they had in those schools. And so Elliott Ainger, Lemon Bay and Inglewood, which are the three schools in question, they were all considered as part of having capacity or not having capacity. So they were considered just like any other school. I will say though, the additional question in addition to Northport is that once again, that is platted lots area, like Steve said. So that area could just happen tomorrow. They don't have to go through further planning. They don't have to go through further zoning. They could pull a permit tomorrow and start building. And so that area will be one we'll have to continue monitoring as we do all the time. We have a very close relationship with their planning staff in order to monitor that area.
As far as the planning process, there's kind of two strategic levels we want to deal with. When you look at, we just lost a graphic, you look at that graphic. One is the total development in general within the county and the rate you're growing. And the other one is locational issues. Before we get, when we get into financing, you're going to find out that impact fees cannot deal with locational issues. They can't deal with existing conditions. There's a lot of limitations. So when we show some of the alternatives and revenues, you're going to see the impact fees will not pay for some of the issues related to growth because the law won't let us do. It won't let us back up and it won't let us do with intense development. And for example, passing an impact fee where you'll never have to bus a student, that's never going to happen. We're just not going to calculate them that way. So I just wanted to highlight that when you see these locational issues and we start talking about revenues and fees versus, you know, taxes, you're always going to have to have taxes because fees will not allow you to charge at a rate that's going to deal with the things that occur because of the locational issues of growth and the timing of growth. Timing and location is not something impact fees do, they just help. So I just wanted to highlight, and that visual just shows you the consistency we find, that there's this kind of a separation between the two, even though I know people think the impact fees are on risk, but they're also very limited in terms of when we're doing our calculation and what we can do with them.
I would like to see, you know, if this, when it comes back to us, the future development, you've got zero to fifty, fifty to two fifty, to two hundred, so that's only a hundred and fifty. And then two hundred to four hundred, then you've got four hundred to twenty-seven seventy-two. I don't know where that number came from, but I would rather like to see something zero to fifty, fifty to two fifty, two fifty to five hundred, five hundred to a thousand, and then over a thousand. I mean, because there's a big gap between four thousand and twenty-seven hundred. I mean, I don't know how many, I mean, are there any twenty-seven hundred student generations in there?
My guess is that we just don't have that many huge developments in terms of numbers that we'll go back and check. If we have eight or ten at twenty-seven hundred, we'll.
Well, I think there's a big difference between four hundred and a thousand.
Again, it has a lot to do with the number of developments in each one of those categories. There may only be two developments and, you know, we'll go back and look and check it. We'll check that. It's a good point. We'll be sure that if it needs to be a finer grade, we'll do that.
Because our growth has really never been at a high level in about the last five years and not projected to be any higher than, say, a thousand or so in the next coming year. So we really need to look at, refine those numbers on the lower end.
Okay. This is give you, again, strategically, an order of magnitude of total students countywide. And we showed you five-year increments, the total number of students, and then we divided that by the five years to show you the average number of students that would be coming into the school system each year on the average, just to give you an order of magnitude. And again, to deal with this, if elementary schools, I've got half a dozen, what is it, nine hundred? How many do you have in elementary? So if you're looking at that one year of seven hundred and forty-nine students and half of those elementary, that's about a half an elementary school that would be consumed that one year. So that's just giving you an order of magnitude of the rate of growth and the type of consumption that's occurring with the number of students that we're projecting for you to kind of do the acid test, does it look reasonable? We have some of our counties that have five times as many students moving in every year. So we don't feel uncomfortable with these numbers.
Is most of our growth currently coming from charter schools?
Well, we can talk about charter. What we've done with the charter schools, look at the trend, long-term historical trend, and then try to project whether there is only upswing or down in terms of the student generation rates that we're using are public school students, not private and not charter. So this is clearly the number of students in the public school system, not the private or the charter school system we're projecting.
It's interesting because when I read reports, I see that the charter schools are growing and we're not. That's why I'm questioning this.
I think it's a situation where our public schools hadn't been growing as much as the charter schools, the bulk of the growth. But when you look at our elementary capacity, you know, over the last five years incrementally, for a number of our elementary schools, they've been filling up spots. It's just the rate of growth has been higher in the charter schools. But there has been some growth that has occurred, particularly at our elementary schools.
And our principals of our high schools have told me as recent as this week that they expect higher numbers this year and they were pretty excited about that, so.
Yes, that's been the initial response. It looks like we're going to have a strong number of high school students.
And when you look at, when you look at the charters in relationship to the elementary, middle and high school, and we're going to show that here shortly, it's, the charters have been consistently affecting mostly our middle school level. That's why we're only projecting, we're projecting limited increases at the middle school level. But the elementary level and the high school level, which where we have our greatest demand is also where we have our highest and least amount of access capacity. So while we expect the charters will still remain robust at that middle school level, the elementary and high school levels, we expect to continue to be at the public school level.
This curve basically takes those population projections and converts them to housing projections and then students is giving you a visual picture of what's happening year by year in terms of the projected growth. We're looking for you to move back up from the slow growth we had. We had the oh-eight crash down, now we're picking back up. And so what you're seeing there is a curve where we're picking back up to your normal growth levels and then over time, we'll start trending back down to the long-term lower generation rate. So what this is showing you is the, using that generation rate and then showing you the elementary students showing up. And then we've tried to put a dot in each year in which you're looking, you're looking at needing to plan and start funding and considering constructing elementary school. And what you'll see with the elementary school system is in the first five years, we're talking about the two elementary schools. And over a ten-year period, we're sitting there with at least three in terms of construction and then dealing with that fourth and fifth, you know, school that you need to start dealing with, siding and planning. So there's going to be a difference between what comes online and what you strategically need to be dealing with in terms of the, you can't just go one year and pick up the whole amount of money and then fund a school. You have to plan on these over time. So the planning numbers will show a little bit. So the planning numbers will show a little bit additional schools than what we think is the actual detailed construction numbers. The other thing that I'll mention is that the planning numbers, we've looked at a reasonable five-year period taking some unreasonable growth in all the state. And this year, very common to most of our counties, your average new home during a five-year period generated point two-two students per home. The average county wide is point one-five. We can't charge that. We can't charge point two-two because over the forty-year life, you're averaging point one-five through transition. So that's another example that the new homes are coming online, creating this geographic demand, and we're trying to plan for that, where we're using point one-five in terms of the average students and total homes. And again, that's like somewhat disconnect between your planning numbers, your geographic issues, and your overall numbers countywide. So that graph there is showing you students showing up geographically in what you need to build with a point two-two showing up in each home. Where you need to understand that countywide, you're at point one-five. That includes all your, you know, waterfront and some of the older communities. So I just want to be sure you understand, you'll see somewhat of a disconnect between planning, geographic timing issues, and the overall issue that if you could just take students and move them twenty miles anywhere you wanted to, and you averaged the same number for all types of development. So this, we feel comfortable that from a planning perspective and demand and locational issues, that this is the rate you need to be dealing with your, the number of schools in your plan. So this is the middle school, and you clearly have more current capacity in the middle school, significant more. And again, you'll always see us all going back to the elementary, elementary, elementary. It seems to be the biggest issue that we find in the statewide. The middle school system, you can see, are the plans and projections. If you're sitting out there with that eighth, ninth, tenth year, you need to make sure you get maybe a site, two sites maybe is an option, and you need to start thinking about some, again, appropriations. But we don't see the middle school is in a ten-year plan as one of your big issues in terms of the plan we're putting together. This is your high school, and you can see that that has moved in inside the ten-year plan. They're much larger. They're much more expensive. And if you're ever going to, again, start creating your appropriations, do your siding, the high schools are critical because of their size and the intensity of what they are. So we're seeing at least that one high school, you need to start dealing with some significant appropriations and a plan for the high school and be prepared to move with the high school construction. So from a planning perspective, we're talking about, in our mind, maybe a minimum of three elementary schools, that range of four to five. And that one high school, you clearly need to start developing the plan for and start dealing with some funds for a high school. So that's the range of what the plan's going to be addressing in both the strategies of locational issues and also financing issues. Again, and I've said this several times during the presentation, they're really critical. We're dealing with program capacity. We were asked to do that, and that's what we're doing, a permanent program capacity. We have a goal of limiting the number of portables. That is an option. But that's one of the primary goals you have is to deal with that for your permanent capacity. We're trying to limit having to move the students all over the county in terms of the locational issues, which again, creates a timing and a revenue issue. And again, we do have, the assumption that we have the stable charter school. And you mentioned, we found this statewide, the charter schools seem to be targeted for certain types of school. And so far, we've not seen them build real responsive to the elementary school issues throughout the state. But it is clearly something that's considered, and we have no charter school or private students in our generation rates in terms of the planning process. This is the thing about, and when we do public facility planning for a lot of public facilities, transportation and schools make up about eighty percent of the dollars you've invested in all your public facilities countywide. They're very expensive, and if you notice, almost all your public areas, you're usually talking about two major items, schools and transportation. And that's because it's just a very valuable item to produce in terms of your assets. At one elementary school with a nine hundred and seventy students, we're estimating at twenty-seven million dollars. That's a big chunk, that includes a property, because he does have some stuff he's doing with the cost of schools and the property allocation. The middle schools, again, with thirteen hundred and fifty is your design, is almost forty-six million dollars. And that high school, which is the one that's really interesting, because they're very big, they come online, you know, much less frequently, but it is a big number in terms of having that money accumulated and planning out a high school. And we're showing that at ninety million dollars. And your average sizes are well within range, is what we're seeing all over the state in terms of the smaller and the larger schools in terms of your standards that you're using.
I just wanted to make a quick comment on something you said on the assumptions, because these weren't particularly board-generated, and I'm talking about the limited node redistricting. And of course, there's a very practical reason that we don't like to redistrict, because we have very vocal parents get very upset. But the reality is that we have some schools that are underutilized, and we have some schools that are overutilized. So I think at some point in time, before we reinstate a tax on construction, I think we need to look at making sure that the schools that we have are full, even if we have to do, God forbid, some redistricting.
At the elementary level, with the exception of Atwater Elementary, our schools are at or near capacity across elementary. So redistricting at the elementary level almost isn't an option, because there's nowhere to redistrict them to, with the exception of Atwater. At the high schools, you're getting close to finding a similar thing where our high schools are at or near capacity. In fact, what we're hearing from our principals this year is they're beginning to float teachers. What that means is, like an English teacher, for example, I don't have a place to put her or him and say, this is your space, so we'll move you into vacant classrooms created by teacher planning spaces. So at those two levels anyway, elementary and high school, redistricting, even if you said you wanted to do it, becomes a challenge because there isn't capacity to move those kids to generally.
And are you saying then that Booker High School is at capacity?
Remember Booker High School is close. No, it is not, but it's close. Remember Booker High School was built with a core of sixteen hundred, but a capacity of twelve hundred, with the expectation that when the time came, we could add a four-hundred student station classroom wing to that building. And her enrollment today, don't hold me to the number, but she's over eleven hundred. So she's not at capacity, but she's getting there.
The other thing regarding redistricting is remember by state standard, we have to evaluate redistricting as part of our needs analysis. So the state wouldn't allow us to not evaluate redistricting as we get and move forward in the identification of needing a new school.
Evaluating redistricting and actually doing a redistricting at the board level is two completely different things.
True, but it is a requirement for us.
I also wanted to comment, you know, that the elementary school capacity at nine hundred and seventy, I still think that's a large elementary school. You know, I think five hundred is nice, but I guess for reasons, how many schools, elementary schools do we now have that are over a thousand? Do you know by any chance?
Enrollment or capacity?
Either.
Atwater Elementary was the last school we built, and I think they're fish capacity. I remember that's greater than program, but it's just over a thousand. Lamarck, at one point in time, was near a thousand. Tatum Ridge, when it opened, was over a thousand, but they're back near eight hundred today, so.
Yeah, that's why this nine hundred and seventy school capacity for elementary schools, it seems like we're building big elementary schools.
And remember, what we use nine seventy for was the planning factor to decide how expensive the school was. Nine seventy is kind of our prototype school. If we were going to build Lamarck Elementary again today without the autism wing, its capacity would be around nine seventy. So, I mean, that's a number that I think the board could set, we could work with wherever you're comfortable. But for planning purposes and saying, how does a school respond to our anticipated growth? Nine seventy was just the number we used because it's associated with our current Edspec prototype roughly.
And we know that this year, our kindergarten and first grade enrollment has been down, based on not having babies, I guess, during the bad times of the recession. But we had an opening for new students in some of our always closed classrooms as a result of that, like Southside and Philippi and some others.
Ms. Brown, the answer to your question specifically is that we have four schools that have a capacity over a thousand. And then we have two additional schools that have a capacity over nine hundred. So if you look at nine hundred plus, you're at six schools.
And those are the ones that were more recently built during the time of large, quick expansion down in Northport. But I think building is, because I mean, I don't, I mean, when we had, you know, twelve hundred elementary students going to a school, but that's my feeling. I think a thousand students in an elementary school is a lot.
And just know that Ed specifications is a document, is a policy document of the board that you adopt. So that certainly is something that can be reviewed. It has an impact then also in terms of planning if you build them smaller. So that's certainly something that is open for discussion. What we used was what had current, was the current adopted policy.
My general sense of most of the clients we're working for, they don't like big. But things have got so expensive and your, the utilization and the efficiencies are, so there's a real agonizing process going on in terms of size, efficiency, and cost, you know, statewide in terms of providing the service. So those are three numbers to keep in mind. So what we basically did is just to show you that the five elementary schools giving those numbers would be a little over eighty million dollars. The high school, you can see, is that the ninety million dollars. And so looking at that range, it could be anywhere from just the three elementary schools at eighty million. Or if you really start dealing with having to do with a high school, you're running up to a hundred and seventy million. So again, in terms of range of revenues per year, you need to start considering it, in our mind, as a minimum. You're talking about seven or eight, nine million dollars a year. That you need to start talking about, you know, dealing with appropriations for your plan in terms of billing schools. And that should be from a strategic planning process, kind of a minimum number. And then understanding that if things do, we do have some counties that are being surcharged right now. You've not reached that point, but all of a sudden, they're moving at a much faster rate than they had projected. You just need to be prepared to look at those ranges of numbers in terms of the dollars. And this was a table we just put together in terms, just to showing you those ranges in terms of the planning versus the construction. And the planning numbers should be in front of the construction numbers in terms of, again, site location, understanding you need to have appropriations. And again, you can see the range of numbers, at least from the planning document.
This was, this particular slide is one that was dropped out of the version that you got. So we can get this slide to you.
These were actually supposed to be deleted. This is a lot of backup material showing us how we're deciding when to pull the plug and saying we need to bill some schools. Again, this is just showing you the, you talk about, you know, redistricting and where you are and the capacities. This is just showing you the conditions of the high school and the one planned high school, where we would put it down in the south side, and you're seeing why, because of that locational development. And again, the year you pull to trigger how much you're funding and how much you want to move somebody from the center of the county up to the northern district and do that would affect some of those issues. That's a policy you need to set. We were given the guidance that that area right there would probably be a reasonable area to deal with saying, we need to build that high school to deal with that set of districts. So we're saying from a location position, that's pulling the trigger on the high school. You can develop a policy that you're going to, you know, have the students all, you know, move all around the county, and then you could moderate that by a year or two in terms of when the high school's actually constructed.
One of my understandings is that very well could be a charter school, a high school that's built right in that area.
Well, that would be, if that happens, you sure need to consider that before you build a high school, if that actually occurs.
We also own property in Northport for a high school.
Sure.
How far away is that from this location? It's pretty far, isn't it?
It's pretty far. The site we own right now, yeah, Mickey's putting her arrow on it. It's right smack next to Woodland Middle School, kind of between Woodland and where the Snowver Waterway crosses, Panacea Boulevard.
We would recommend very highly that it's very nice to have developers set aside. And I don't know about that development agreement, but if you do have an impact fee, my guess is they may get credits where, I don't know. But I'd be very careful with setting aside and making sure you're planning out high schools and then putting a high school where they need to be. And unless something happens in Northport that's pretty substantial, you've got to be very careful before you put a high school out there. And when you do, from a, just from a strategic position. Again, this is your middle schools. Your middle schools do not have, you can see some, a lot of green in the middle school and the yellow in the center. And in far as planning and locational issue between where we're projecting development, and you see the two red house spots we're projecting, we just generally located that middle school kind of in the center of that, that demand area in terms of considering where your next middle school would be. And remember, we're saying that was the one that probably can be pushed out the longest in terms of a strategy. Again, you can see the elementary school. That's where you do not have the substantial amount of capacity. And you can see the same thing we suggested to you, the locational issue of where those elementary schools are being projected. And we're saying in the ten-year period, you're talking about the three being kind of the magical construction number versus the five being from a planning strategy, being sure you're ready to respond and have the plan ready for the elementary schools.
I was looking at the middle school one, and there's a big red one, but there's a whole bunch of little red arrows, meaning they're existing alternative magnet schools. There's got to be thirty of them on this page. I mean, is that accurate? How can there be that many alternative middle schools?
I didn't, I got that map from...
I mean, are we talking charter schools or?
Maybe.
I mean, there's just a ton of little red arrows. I mean, little red flags on that page. I'm like, what are they?
I'd be honest with you, I'm not familiar with the symbols.
Yeah. I think somebody hit the repeat key or something. Are those pink? They both look red to me, but...
We'll evaluate this map once again.
Yeah, those existing alternative schools just look off to me. I'm sorry I didn't catch that earlier.
No, it'd be nice to get it right.
And this map is missing the fifth potential school, which would be planned for the Lakewood Ranch in. It is on your handrail, but it's not in the presentation being on the screen.
All right. Next slide. Again, that's, I guess, I think we have a pretty good sense. And again, we can take some of your comments about the policies that we've kind of set in terms of those projections and maybe change some of those strategic numbers. Rather than five elementary schools, if you really want to set a policy of moving the students all around the county, we can take the strategic plan and move it down to four. I mean, we can take some guidance from you, but given your first set of guidance, we think we've got a pretty good strategic plan. And we have a pretty good sense of what you need to be funding in terms of a kind of a minimum standard for funding. And what we're looking for, and I guess we're going to get some more comments from staff, is some, just some guidance, because we're now moving to the phase of re-solidifying the projections, re-solidifying the strategy of the plan, and then talking about guidance from you about anything you want us to put in in terms of the alternative financing, in terms of rates of revenue and, you know, the risk you want to take, and he'll talk about it, where you want to use debt, whether you want to use the impact fees, what range of types of things you want to steal, what policy you want to set from your guidance. We'll try to write up the strategy that you want us to put in your plan.
My three questions are, is there going to be a charter high school built at South College of Florida? Elementary and middle schools at Thomas Ranch? And the school at Lakewood Ranch, is that going to be an elementary or a middle school?
I can give you an answer on the Lakewood Ranch. That's an elementary. And the elementary, middle, you are right, and you've mentioned this before. We are in negotiations with the Madam A Homes for a site for the K eight. But in terms of, I think you need to think about that school in terms of the overall planning. It's a part of the planning, it's a part of the evaluation that we're doing. But in terms of the... It's a part of the planning, it's a part of the evaluation that we're doing. But in terms of, um, the compensation for that, I think you need to think about it just as if we were to buy that property like we would buy any other property. Because at this moment, that's what we would do. We would buy that property from Matta May Homes through the, um, as if we were buying any other property. It's not, it's not a school that's going to be built. It would be built by us. Land aside, it's gonna be built by us. So I think it's, it's not a separate, I, I think you're trying to make it a separate, you're trying, you're, it, you're, it's, you're thinking of it as something separate and it's not, it's part of.
I'm not trying to make it separate. I'm trying to understand. Because what I've been told and what I'm hearing are two different things. So I'm trying to understand. If, if a developer, and I don't know for sure if this is going to happen, but if a developer would give us, uh, land and then offer to build an elementary and a middle school, how would we have to pay for it?
Okay. And I guess that's, um, the, the offer to that property is for us to acquire that property through somehow purchasing that property. And whether we purchase that and then give them back impact fees, or we purchase that and then give them any other property and swap, or we purchase that and give them money for that piece of land, um, either way, that would be the acquiring of the land. And then the, um, construction of the, of the school would be something that would be on us. We would be constructing that property. In fact, we, when we've talked about that property in terms of a K eight, we, we don't even talk about building it as a K eight. We talk about building it first as an elementary school, which would meet the immediate need. And then as, and as there would be a demand down the road for additional grades, we would look at adding the six, seven and eight.
Yes, that was a discussion that I had.
Yeah.
So I, I still would like to see an agreement. I don't, I don't want to move forward until I see an agreement and understand what it is that we're getting and what we have to pay, because it's, it's money.
But, but to the extent that that agreement is about an elementary school piece of property, that's a, that's a little tiny piece. I don't want you to get too wrapped around the axle over just that. I have never heard any developer say to anybody, we're willing to build you a school. I've never heard that. And in fact, I've never heard donate a piece of property. Kathy's right. It has always been, and we'll pay for it with an impact fee credit or something like that. But even if, if a developer were to say, we'll give you the piece of property as part of our development layout, um, that's not where the expense is. So I mean, that's part of it. I don't want to say the property's free, but, but the real expense is in vertical construction. And under any circumstance that I can foresee, that's on us. That's on the board.
I would be glad to go back and re-clarify, to make sure that I have full understanding of what I'm saying. But, so what did we offer, um, Lakewood Ranch then? Did we offer them impact fee credits?
Mickey's probably the closest to that. I'm gonna let Mickey respond to that.
Finalized.
It has.
That agreement was an agreement that was reached because Lakewood Ranch was a development of regional impact. And at that time, there was a requirement to provide a school site. We didn't have impact fee credits in place at the time that we got the development, but should they be reinstated, there would be impact fee credits.
So nothing was, nothing was promised to that, to that development?
No.
But, but understand that that, that Lakewood Ranch came in as a development of regional impact, which, um, West Villages is not coming in as. And it, and part of the state standards for development of regional impact is that they were required to provide us a school site. That is not a requirement by West Villages. So there was a state requirement because of the way the Lakewood Ranch project came in through the development process to provide us a school site. That is not the same, we don't have any other requirement like that in the county.
And, and I think to say that they weren't given anything isn't exactly accurate. I mean, they were given the okay to build. I mean, if, if they didn't do that, they, it wouldn't have passed. I mean, so that, that was just part of what they had to do in, in, in order to meet the state requirements to build.
That's, that's right. As part of a development of regional impact, um, it was a requirement for them in order to get their development approvals to provide us a school site. It is a unique circumstance that does not exist anywhere else in the county. The West Villages project did not come in as a development of regional impact. Um, so they didn't meet that standard. It's, it's unique and they're the only ones. We had others in the past, but moving forward, it's not likely.
Are we gonna be going through these different revenue options now, or, or were you asking for a decision? Okay.
As part of our scope, we were asked to update the impact fee calculations. So this section of the presentation kind of goes through those, uh, technical calculations. So as you know, impact fee is a one-time capital charge to new development and, and they are really, can only be used for new capacity projects. But to the extent that they free up other dollars, they help the maintenance and so on. But they cannot be directly spent on maintenance. Next slide. And, uh, impact fees allow growth to help pay for itself. And as Steve mentioned before, they are the, they're most significant in the case of transportation and schools because those two infrastructures are, make up about eighty percent of a community's infrastructure capital investment. So that's when you see the higher rates because of that. Our basic impact fee formula looks at the cost of providing schools. So that's the asset value of schools, buildings, transportation and so on, per student. Uh, from that, we give a credit that recognizes any non-impact fee contributions by future development. So any taxes they pay toward the same type of infrastructure is credited. And then this net cost is multiplied by demand, which is measured in terms of the student generation rates. Uh, we have several components that help us, uh, get to the final fee and we'll go through each one. So we start with your inventory that includes the traditional schools. Right now, the board has thirty-nine traditional schools that we included in the impact fee calculations. You have some other schools, but because they are not the typical, uh, on a regular basis built schools that, uh, you know, they're, they are excluded. So these are just the traditional schools. Then we look at the square footage per student station that was, uh, used as a standard prototype school. So basically, we want to understand the type of school you will build in terms of square footage. So we look at that and based on recent schools. Facility cost per student station includes all components of building a school. So that's anything from buying the land to building the building, any design fees, site preparation, you know, furniture, fixture, equipment and so on. Um, this slide has a lot of numbers, but basically what we did to come up with your current cost of building schools is we looked at any recently built schools by the district. Uh, we look at the insurance values of existing schools and we supplement that information from schools built, uh, by other Florida jurisdictions, uh, like over the past few years to have a bigger sample. So with that, uh, we, overall, we came up with about thirty-five thousand dollar per student station when we include all that.
That's, that's a critical number. That's, that's what it costs to have one student supplied the capital value that you have to build to accommodate one student as they move in. Which is a, kind of a staggering number and it's grown over time. And, and as I say, statewide, that number has been really pushed in terms of increasing the size of the schools and the prototypes have fewer square feet per students. So there's a lot of work trying to get that number down statewide. And, but this is a very common number. We've got higher numbers of this. We've got a few that are a little bit lower than this. But this is a very common number in terms of what it costs to accommodate a student and that's, that's a critical number.
And you also see the variation by school level in this slide. The last row, you know, the elementary schools being about twenty-eight thousand and that goes up to forty-five thousand per student station for, uh, high schools. So that's kind of the same cost figures we used.
I have a quick question and maybe Scott, you can answer this. Um, do we compare, how, how do we compare from other states as far as cost? From building schools? Cause I know I've talked to other, other states and I think Florida tends to be on the higher side from where I've gathered. So, um, I just wanted to get your input on that, cause that obviously plays a vital role in where we're at today.
I, I can tell you how we compare to other counties in the state of Florida. I don't know that I can give you a good answer relative, we can do some research. The, we are, in fact, Steve and I talked about this a little bit as he was, was putting these numbers together. Our student station cost is a little higher than the state average. Uh, frankly, that's deliberate. Uh, we do some things in the construction of our schools that push down over the life cycle of the school on the cost of maintenance. Uh, a couple of good examples, Venice, Venice High School has a brick exterior. What that means, uh, this coming up year, we're probably gonna paint Riverview High School. And we're gonna do that every seven years and that's a six-figure project. We won't ever do that at Venice High. Uh, we put ceramic tile on the walls of our bathrooms to hold down on our custodial staffs. We use thermal storage as our way to cool our, uh, schools and take advantage of FPL's rate structure. So we do some things that cause our, the cost of, of construction of a school to be higher than the state average. But we get that back on the general fund side in operating the school over the life of the building.
Another reason why I'm not sure state to state would work is because we have to build our schools per state requirement for fifty years and to hurricane standards. You don't get that in Wisconsin.
Certainly the state requirements for educational facilities and Florida building code drive a lot of what we do, for sure. If you're interested though, we can do a little bit of research and I, I frankly have never done that.
I've just talked to other people, for example, Arizona, but you make a very valid point. Um, there is very different.
Yeah. So I mean, I don't see why we would spend any time trying to figure those numbers.
Well, I just wanna, I think, I understand from the operational side, but I think it is important to, you know, trending to see where we're at, to make sure where the need is based on excessive spending.
When we're, when we're doing our, our work, we've, I think we're doing seven or eight right now and we've probably done, uh, twenty in the last three, four, or five years. And we've got a chart showing overall construction costs, construction costs going up through oh eight and then finally coming down and trending. So construction costs has really been a tricky thing to work with, with the economy we've been through and the bids that we've had. And so we're really careful with looking at what it's been, where it is now, the current trends, whether it's trending upward or downward. And in general, what we're finding is that we've trended, we've finally trended downward quite a ways. And, but consistently across the board, most of our clients are starting to trend upward. They'll never do what we did from oh two to oh eight. Wouldn't, nobody ever wants to wish that on anybody, but I think we're gonna trend upward. And so these numbers are probably conservative in terms of the trends we're seeing and the numbers we're currently using. Uh, and us being up in a, back to the three, four, five percent increases rather than being flat over the next few years.
Okay, next slide. So that cost that we showed you was per station. So we convert that to cost per student. And when we look at, when we do this, we look at the available capacity versus enrollment. So right now, countywide, uh, the district has about eight percent available capacity. So if there was an intent to continue that, that, that basically what it says, every student is getting more than one station built. So the current investment level is such that, you know, each station is getting like one point oh eight station. So that's the, that's measures the investment the community made up to this point. Go to next slide. But then we also look at your adopted level of service standards to see if there's an intent to continue. In terms of the standards, you allow enrollment to exceed the capacity by about five percent at the elementary school level. So basically, we adjust the cost downward to account for that. So you're, so basically, one shows your investment up to this point and the other one, the standard, shows the intent to continue. And we pick the lower of the two numbers for the cost.
I think it's important to point out, and, and correct me if I'm wrong, that the reason, um, you know, we have each student taking up a hundred and eight percent is so that the so-called specials, um, the art and music teacher don't have to move from room to room to room. They have a set classroom and the students will go to those classrooms.
Right.
Other, otherwise it would be, I, I think, a major problem. So some people wonder, well, why are we giving each student a hundred and eight percent? That's why, so that they can have those extra classes, those classrooms for those extras, what we call special classes.
Right. And the other thing that this calculation is blind to is this is a countywide sum. So it doesn't take into account that you have some schools over capacity in certain locations. So impact fee calculations in that sense don't, uh, account for any kind of, uh, spot, hotspots and locations and, uh, this type of, uh, program issues, functional issues.
Yeah, that also gives the, the school some leeway in case that, well, we've got more second graders this year than we had or that we were anticipating and then they can move the art teacher around and keep those classes together.
Right. So, so basically, in this slide, what we do is because your adopted level of service standard allows for, uh, almost like a deficiency of five percent, per se, uh, we lower that cost for that, account for it when we convert it to per student. So each student will get almost like ninety-five percent station type thing. So the overall, and the other two, we keep it at the adopted standard of hundred percent, don't recognize the available capacity again because for impact purposes, we have to use the lower of, lower cost of the two. So that reduces the cost slightly to about thirty-four thousand plus. Next slide. So, to the building cost, we then add the transportation cost. This is the buses and white fleet. And then the ancillary facility costs and those are the things like maintenance buildings, um, garages and, um, administrative buildings. Um, so this slide shows that, uh, in terms of transportation costs, the cost per student is about thirteen hundred dollars almost. And the ancillary faci- facility cost is about sixteen hundred. That's again, just taking the value of those assets and dividing it by enrollment. Next slide. We then look at the credits and those are given for any non-impact fee revenue funding for the expansion. So any taxes that go toward the building new schools or buying sites or buying new buses and so on, um, deserves a credit if it was funded with ad valorem. And then any future payments of existing debt, debt that was used to fund new schools is also gets a credit. So next slide. Okay. So this is the revenue or sort of cash non-debt credit. And basically, the main part of it is being driven by the one school in the CIP. It's about forty million. And then there's some historical expenditure. So we look at past five years, how the, everything was funded. And then we look at next five years, how the school district intends to fund it. And that's how we come up with the average annual expenditures that's being paid with non-impact fee dollars. So in this case, it was about a hundred, two dollar per student. We then have a credit adjustment factor to recognize that new homes pay higher ad valorem than average home. So we increase the credit by that amount. And then we, um, calculate the present value of it over the next twenty-five years. So the total credit ends up to be about almost twenty-eight hundred.
Again, just to, to show you, cause the, the law says we have to be more than, it used to be the, the responsibility was on the per people gonna sue you and now the responsibility of you to be very careful. So we give, we give them a, a, a new tax credit for the value of a new home. The new home has more students in it than an old home. We charge the new home for the average of the existing homes, but we give them credit for the higher value. So in every case, what we're trying to do is making sure if anybody says, well, what did you do? Well, what we did was we use the average student generation for all homes. But my guess is the new home here is thirty-three percent more valuable than an average home. And so moving forward for a tax credit, we're giving that new home that average increase. So in every case, we don't destroy the calculation, but we're very careful to, to, to do that. So in this case, we're giving the full value of a new home, average home, not the average home. And we're charging a generation rate if that new home's gonna have the average number of students. Just another example of just the checks we go through each time to be sure we're being reasonable with the, the calculations.
Part of that, part of what you just said, I'm curious about. We know that increased construction increases the tax base and therefore the property value. So our one and a half mils five years from now was gonna be higher because of that new construction. Is that factored into your calculations?
Well, what, what makes values go up is income. Uh, I've done it for, I've looked at sixty years to the state of Florida. If income goes up three or four percent, the community, the tax value goes up three or four percent. Uh, I know those new homes for a period of time generate a little bit more money than the average, but over the four-year cycle.
But that's not what I'm saying. I'm saying if you take a pasture in the middle of somewhere and the taxable value is X.
Right.
You put three hundred houses on that same property, now the taxable base is considerably higher than it was originally. So our one and a half mils is gonna create. So is that, I guess, I'm just.
We, we look at it, uh, from a side of the expenditures, the investment the school district is doing on average for capacity. So you're. So your millage may increase, but if most of that increase is going to maintenance, it's not really taken into account in the impact fee calculation. So we look at your planned projects that will be funded with millage, and then what was funded historically, and come up with an average representative number. Now, if you know that that number is going to go up very soon, then we would want to take that into account in the...
So it almost makes it sound like you're taking that increased millage off of these new residences and putting it into the maintenance pot as opposed to the pot of money that we would use to build a new school.
Right now, we are, yeah, the credit calculation assumes one forty million dollar school in the next five years. If this were to double, we would need to adjust those calculations.
Well, I'm still not getting the answer. Maybe, I'm not understanding. So what I'm saying is, if a developer builds five thousand houses and needs a school for those five thousand houses, but those five thousand houses were getting one and a half mils of capital off those five thousand houses, where is that one and a half mils going? It's, we're not using it or calculating it towards the price of the new house, the school that we needed to build for those five thousand houses. So where'd it go?
If it was going to new schools, it would go to the developer. If it's going to reconstruction and major maintenance and renovation, because that one point five is being used heavily, used to be too, I believe, is being used heavily by most of our school systems to replace roofs and air conditioners and those. So if, if it's going to go to capital, it would be in here as a credit, if it's going to build those schools.
So it's not going to those five, the school that we built for those five thousand houses? It's going for maintenance of schools that we already had on land.
If, if you took the one and a half mils and put it to build new schools, and that's all you did, you, you're done. You don't have a problem. If you could, if you could take your one and a half mils of capital and build nothing but new schools, you would have more capital money than you need.
I'm not talking about our whole pot of one and a half mils. I'm talking about the one and a half mils that is generated by those five thousand houses that were built, and we need to build a new elementary school for those five thousand houses.
Then it would be credited.
Where did that, I'm wanting to know, why is that one and a half mils not factored in? And it's not just us that I question that, because, I mean, that's kind of the whole attitude on these things we refer to as impact fees, that there is no increase in value on these, the tax base of these houses that are being developed. And I don't know where that money goes, whether it's county dollars or school board.
I, I think what, I think what Steve is trying to say is our, how he's dealing with that increase in the value of the tax roll base, at least in the first five years, is how we have allocated it. Because we have spent it in our five-year capital plan one way or another. And so what Tyndall Oliver did is they looked inside our five-year capital plan and said, okay, and you'll, you'll see in my numbers, if you look at that first chart that had the little bathtub on it, we are projecting the tax roll base to go up, and so what the millage generates obviously goes up too. And so what they've done is say, okay, in the five-year plan, how have you spent it? And what they've seen is we've allocated forty million dollars of that increase in the tax roll base over five years to a new school, what we've called Elementary J in year five. The rest of it has been allocated to the capital program, things that he touched on, like the maintenance of existing schools and replacement of school buses and debt service and replacement of computers. And so what they did with it relative to the impact fee is based entirely on how we've spent it, at least in the next five years. So the, the forty million dollars of that new tax roll base that's going towards Elementary J in year five is an impact fee credit. The rest of it, they have assumed we've spent on existing infrastructure. Does that...
I get it. I don't know that I agree with it, but I get what you're saying, so we can move on.
I'll take one more second in terms of, there, there's an economics question here, and it's an interest you want to ask. Geographically, where you collect money, hotspots of revenue, and the average economy? What we find is if you built a bunch of low-income housing, and the wages went down, the income went down, over thirty years, your tax base would actually be reduced, no matter how many homes you build. That it's not the homes being built that generate the revenue. Do geographically, I mean, the check comes from that geographic area, but it's the average age and wages that affect the tax base. It's kind of, that's an economics issue. And I know there's a whole meaning you could have on the economics of growth, and because you have geographic revenues coming in that look really nice for a time period, it looks like growth is generating a huge increase in revenues. Where the reality is, in every county we're working in, is the average income goes up four percent, no matter what's being built, the tax base goes up four percent. If, if the wages go up, a certain percentage of sales tax goes up. And you get hotspots of revenue from new construction that's more valuable than average construction, but that's a whole conversation. What we're doing is taking his year policy of how much capital money you're using for new expansion, and we're going to give the newer home its value and a full credit for your policy decision of how much to use on building new schools. And if you want to take that money and build new schools with it and not do reconstruction, it would surely show up in the impact fee credit.
That, that forty million dollars that we're putting away for a new elementary school, and the way you're talking about how we're using it, I mean, I, I think we could also, if we needed a new wing at Booker, you know, use those current. But is forty million dollars what the tax base is expected to increase in that time? That one and a half mil generating?
One, in terms of the way we built the budget, one has nothing to do with the other. We simply said, what does the revenue stream look like over a five-year period? We backed out things like debt service and transfers and recurring costs to the departments and said, okay, what's left is a certain pot of money. Here are all the competing interests for that money. What rises to the top of the list? So that, I don't think that, if there is a correlation, it's by accident. There isn't a direct correlation between that forty million and the tax roll base. Now, certainly, the increase in the tax roll base is what made it possible for us to fund that project, but our tip was not to just...
Maybe we'd like to see what that increase in the tax roll base you think it's going to be, and how much of that is being used for new construction or expansion of student stations? If, if not a new elementary school, or maybe if we're expanding, you know, high school or middle school.
Well, what you can see in your, just in your budget documents now, in fact, I included most of the capital budget in your read ahead, you can look at the ad valorem line on the revenue side of your capital budget, and you can see how the tax roll base is changing revenue. I mean, that's directly what you see in that ad valorem.
I don't remember what that number is, but we're talking about, are we talking, with five years or ten years? What, what do we expect the increase in revenue because of new construction to increase in the next period that we're talking about, that we're calculating this? And is that forty million about what that is, or is that half of what it is?
I, I understand your question. I can't give you an answer off the top.
Okay, yeah, I don't know what it is offhand either.
I could, I could in three minutes tell you what the increase in the tax roll base is doing to your revenue stream. I can't tell you out of the budget documents what percentage of that is a function of new construction.
Okay, thank you.
He's asleep. Leave him alone.
I'll, I'll give one, one more comment, and this is kind of statewide. And we've got, we've got your graphs of all your revenues for the last forty years, and I think we talked to your budget people. What we're recommending the most, and I think in your, your county, is that, that the, the values in most counties are depressed about eight, ten, twelve percent below our long-term trend line. And what Department of, of Revenues is doing in the state, you're going to see that most of their tax-based revenues, they're going to, they're going to increase the ad valorem tax base anywhere from four to seven percent for about five years, which is way, way above the statewide average. And then about the fifth or sixth year, they take that ad valorem tax revenue and start moving out at four percent. And that's been the forty-year trend. Your income's been going up about four percent, and your tax base has been going up four percent for many years. The problem we've got is, is it went up so high and it's come down so low that the first four or five years, most of the time, they're saying five to seven, up to seven percent. That's to get you back down your trend line. And then what they're going to do, or anybody would do, is being the average of four percent increase every year for many, many years, it's three to four percent increase in your ad valorem tax base. I mean, that's, if you're looking for some numbers, those are general numbers that we're seeing, four to seven in the first four or five years, according to what county you're in and how depressed it is. And then projecting out, you know, three to four percent, which is a, pretty well a standard number that most of the budget people are doing. But your budget people, I think, are going to, are doing the projections for the first ten, and that's what we'll work with. And it'll be a little more accelerated than if we did a twenty-year plan for you in terms of your tax base going up.
All right, so this slide basically summarizes net cost per student, so it takes the total cost, and from that subtract the credits. So the net cost that we can charge ends up being about thirty-four thousand or so. We then use the student generation rates to measure the demand. And as Steve mentioned, here, we are using generation rates from all homes, because impact fee is for the life of the home. So it's a lower rate. And that's basically averaging about point one five for all homes, as opposed to point two two that new homes were generating. And for single families, about point two three, and then it's lower for multifamily and mobile home. And then the final impact fee is calculated by multiplying the net cost with the generation rate. And again, as you know, impact, school impact fees are charged only to residential end users. So this charge shows the calculated rate at hundred percent. So for single-family home, it'd be about seventy-eight hundred, and then twenty-two hundred for multifamily, and seven hundred or so for mobile homes.
We're using word calculated, not recommended. We don't recommend fees. We calculate them. I mean, you're, you're the ones who decide what you want to do with it. This is just a, kind of a conservative number that, you know, you can use in terms of what, what it's costing you to add the students.
Just a quick question I thought of, because we were talking about that. Haven't built a new house in quite a while. Impact fee is paid at the permit or at the CO, or when is it, how and when is it?
At the CO in Serra Sola County.
And paid by whom?
The developer.
And what if there's no...
It is negotiated. It is paid to the county at the time of development order, and it is paid by the development, it is paid by the developer. Who actually pays that is, is negotiate, could be, could be the buyer, but that is not who pays it to the county.
What if it's not in a development? What if it's a empty lot somewhere in the county?
Then it, then it would be whoever's building that home, which would be considered. So it's the builder of the home. So if you're at a platted lot, if you're in a platted lot in Northport, and you're building your home, you're, you would pay for that at the time of...
The homeowner would pay for it.
The homeowner would pay for it, or the whoever's constructing that home, whoever's doing the permitting with the city of Northport would do, would pay for it.
Because everything I've heard this morning has said that the developer pays it.
Whoever pulls the building permit at the building department pays all the fees associated with it at that point to get their CO.
At CO, not at permitting.
To get their CO. They have to pay all the fees, and that includes any fees that are an impact fee, so to speak, for water and sewer hookup also. All those fees associated with finally turning the house over.
And then this chart, and the, and I think the next one gives you a comparison of the current adopted fees as well as the calculated fees in other counties. So the, so the table is ranked by the adopted fee, so that's, you know, second to last column. It's ranging anywhere from, you know, twelve hundred to, and then if you go to the next slide, about all the way to ten, ten thousand in Osceola County. And then the calculated fees are, tend to be a lot higher, so there's a lot more in around the, you know, anywhere from seven thousand to twelve thousand range. And finally, this chart shows the estimated impact fee revenues at different adoption percentages. So if the fee was adopted at hundred percent over the next ten years, it's estimated that it would generate about hundred sixty-nine, almost under seventy million, which would be enough to build three elementary school and one high school, or maybe five elementary school and no high schools. And again, at twenty-five percent level, at the lowest level, the revenues would be enough to build one elementary school and start building the next one. Like, we would need altogether fifty-four million, so it's short about twelve million. So that's kind of the range. And again, as Steve mentioned before, basically, the way the impact fees are calculated, they are not necessarily sufficient to build all your schools. They look at the system as a whole and assume like you can use every single station and so on, so that's, and the generation rate is for all homes, not new homes. So it's kind of a, it helps, but it doesn't necessarily build everything that you may need. Next slide, and then next steps, I guess, do you want to go over that or share out?
Again, part of our write-up on the growth management, the planning, is that we've done the projections and the needs, and then we want to talk about finance and, and the financial options you have, and, and he's going to present some information. What we'd like to do is feed his discussion and your decisions to where we can write a document that's kind of integrated in both the growth management part, the calculated impact fee, and then some, at least some finance strategies that you want to give us some guidance to put, put in the report.
One number I would like to see when we're making these decisions, I, I see that, you know, if we, say we're going to do the impact fee at a hundred percent, we can basically build the schools. You know, you've got one thirty-seven to two seventy-three, and you're saying it'll generate one sixty-eight. I would like to also know what that number is in, in the ten years of what the expected, not the overall growth, but the expected growth for new construction would generate at that one and a half percent. So that we know how much that new construction is, and I know we're already figuring forty million of using that, but I'd like to know over ten years what that dollar amount is for new construction, not just the increase, just the new construction at that one and a half percent that we would rate, give.
Sure, I was, I stepped back and had a short conversation with Al as you were talking about this. The, the property appraiser, looking back a year, when the property appraiser gives us the value of the tax roll base, can identify is what percentage of that is as a result of new construction? So what we can probably do is take that kind of historical trend, project it forward into our ad valorem projections, and, and come close to answering.
Yeah, I'm not even sure a historical projection over the last several years is going to be all that accurate, and that we didn't have a lot of new construction.
Nobody's crystal ball, but you'll be able to see the percentages. I mean, we've got enough history, so we can go back and make some adjusted.
Yeah, if you can, yeah, if you can come up with some number that's going to project what that might be for new construction. I would like to see that, so that we can say, you know, to whoever, ask us, well, impact fees are paying for X amount, increased in taxes are paying for X amount, and then either all of it is being paid by new construction, or voters are picking up how much. So I'd like to know how much that is.
The next... In terms of moving forward from here on the discussion that we just had, on August thirty-first, we will get a draft of the technical report that accompanies these presentations. Up till now, we've gotten presentations with graphs and explanation from Nylgen and Steve, but we'll get actually a draft report on August thirty-first. September second, we will have two public information sessions. One is being held at the Sun Coast Technical College on Proctor Road, and the other one is being held at Taylor Ranch in Venice. We did specifically one for North County and one for South County, so that residents and interested citizens can attend whichever one is more convenient for them. The one at Sun Coast Technical College will happen during the afternoon, and the evening one will happen at Taylor Ranch. Then on September fifteenth, there will be a public hearing where the community can voice their opinions about this report to you. And then in October, we'll receive the final technical report ahead of a board action on October twentieth. All of this in preparation for, we need to have to the county of county commissioners something. As you know, our current impact fees are on a five-year moratorium. We need to be able to give them some direction as to how we want to proceed with that, so that they can act on that at their December eighth Board of County Commissioners meeting. So...
These, these public hearings, they're, they're for you to give the information to the public. I know in other times that we've been kind of said, no, this really isn't for the board to be at, because you don't want to have it appear that a board member is saying what we need to do, or giving an opinion for the board when we're not the board. So this basically is a public information, and you will give us feedback.
Yes, the public information sessions are for the public. Up till now, as you're aware, the public hasn't had a chance to comment on the information that has been presented. This is their opportunity to ask questions of staff and of our consultants about, about the information that's being presented, so that they are prepared to have the information they need to provide you comment at your September fifteenth, or your September, yeah, your September fifteenth public hearing.
And I would suggest that you, I, I would think somebody from the public wanted, might want to know how much new revenue is coming from the new construction, so you might want to get that. uh new revenue is coming from the new constructions. You might want to get that number before those meetings and just in case that question comes up.
We'll be basing the presentation on the ones that you've seen in the June and in this month, so.
And I'll, it will be posted online ahead of time for everyone to see.
We're gonna, we're gonna publicly notice all these as if they were workups or board meetings.
Okay, thanks.
I guess the um, where does the conversation go now? Uh we're pretty close to the end of our time, so I don't know how much we want to belabor this. Um, the the read ahead, the narrative read ahead that that I presented at and it kind of at the front of the tabs in your read ahead, it was fairly self-explanatory. But part of what I was trying to do is drive to a discussion about, uh, we have a number of funding options. Which of those funding options would the board like staff to consider as we begin to put together our sixteen seventeen budget? So let me just kind of quickly go through this and hit on some highlights. Um, and I'm in the narrative that says read ahead August eighteenth on the top of it. Uh, the first page is really just a historical snapshot of our capital budget and what I tried to do there is explain that bathtub. When when people ask me, where does your capital revenue come from? I always kind of oversimplify it and say, you know, the math is really simple. It is the value of the tax roll base times millage. Uh, if you think about what happened in that bathtub that kind of began uh right after the eleven twelve school year, both of those things were impacted. Your tax roll base fell pretty dramatically and I included the numbers in the read ahead. At the same time, the state of Florida dropped your millage rate two years in a row by a quarter point. So you went from two mils to one point five mils over time. That was a twenty five percent reduction of your millage rate on top of a declining tax roll base. So that's how you ended up in that bathtub you see there on page one. In the second page, I I started to talk about what's in the current budget and then how do we project costs relative to growth? Uh, two components to that cost. One is the purchase of land. The other is vertical construction. Uh, the numbers you saw today are in today's dollars. So when we said it costs X amount of money to build a high school or an elementary school, that's today's dollars. If you inflate those dollars even at three percent, and that's what I did uh for purposes of this read ahead. And you say, okay, we're going to plan to build a high school in twenty twenty four, you're not going to build that high school for eighty six million. You're going to build it for a hundred and eight million. I mean, the impact of even three percent inflation. And as I talked with our our construction management partners, and I know Mr. Smith's in the room with us today, I think he would agree too. Uh, three percent is probably underestimating, at least in the near term, the cost of inflation of construction. Lots of pressure, particularly on the labor side, uh that is driving up the cost of construction. But for purposes of developing, these numbers, we use three percent.
Before you leave that page, I thought that we were getting, uh traditional public schools were getting PICO funds this year or the next year coming in. I thought it was being split between charter schools and traditional schools.
The last PICO money I saw was associated with Sun Coast Technical College, Northport. Mr. Widener's?
Yes, the maintenance portion has been restored.
The maintenance portion, did you hear that? The maintenance portion has been restored?
So.
Right. Um, you can see, so when we talked about land, two components, I said land and vertical construction. Uh, when you look at the component that talks about land, I included some numbers in there, both how we estimated the price of land and how much land we based our estimates on. Uh, so we based the price of land today on somewhere between fifty and a hundred thousand dollars an acre. That's a pretty broad uh range, but it really does depend on where you buy it and how it's zoned and what the competition is. Uh, so we gave you a range for property prices. And then you can see that we estimated site size for the different level schools. So we set about twenty five acres for an elementary school, about forty acres for a middle school and about seventy five acres for a high school. So you just kind of do the math, fifty to a hundred thousand dollars an acre times those and you can get to a current dollar cost of a of a school site based on the different levels. Buildable acres, yes, thank you. Dry. Meaning dry. Try, we tried to do a similar kind of thing on the on the new vertical construction side. And we based this on the need over ten years for five elementary schools, a middle school and a high school. And part of the reason we did that is because remember that from the time you get the money to when you move into the school is a lag. Uh, at the elementary level, we have funded the next elementary school in the nineteen twenty year. If that's the year we get the money, one year will be a design year, one year will be a construction year. So there's a two-year lag at the elementary level. Probably more likely a three-year lag at the high school level. So those schools that are just the other side of that twenty four, twenty five line that Steve showed you, we've brought those into this. You you don't need the school till twenty six, but you need the funding in twenty four. Does that make sense? Okay. Um, and you can kind of see the math we ran. Um, our numbers are a bit lower than Tindall Oliver's because we separated land. But you can kind of see uh how we came up with the cost of construction, uh just did the math. And you come up with potentially over the next ten years, a a growth need of about three hundred and thirteen million dollars. That would include buying seven sites and building seven schools, five elementary, one middle and one high. The question then becomes, how do you pay for it? And in the read ahead, we included, there are probably more than this, but we included at least five options that we can at least talk about a little bit. Uh, you can borrow, uh you can levy an impact fee, which has been most of today's discussion. Uh, we can reprioritize some of the things that are in our current five-year plan. Uh, we can defer maintenance, um or we could talk about proportionate share part of concurrency. And all of those, I think, are options on the table. Um, and so let me just hit on each one of them really quickly. Uh, if you go to page four, uh, this is where we talk about borrowing and this should be relatively familiar because most of this I took right out of your current budget documents. Uh, at the very top of the page, uh, you see the line there that has the three current cops. I include that in the read ahead mostly to make the point that your current certificates are long-term. There isn't anything that's going to pay off next year or the following year. You'll notice that the that the one that will pay off the soonest doesn't pay off until uh summer of twenty twenty four. So if you were to use additional debt as a way to pay, which I think is a valid option, just know that you're stacking it on top of already some long-term debt.
But we have paid off.
This year, you paid off the, you paid off the certificate that paid for Venice L. Philippi and Wilkinson, right? Right. Which is part of the reason you see more flexible dollars in your capital budget because that was about a six million dollar line, I think, annually.
What is the annual ca- um, uh, cost on the the debt service of the seventy one thousand uh expected millage for capital? How much of it, what's the percent we're using for debt ter- debt payments?
Ask your question again. Five. What's the percentage on debt payments? The last conversation I had with Mitzi was five.
No, I'm not asking for the interest payment. I'm asking for the percent, the percent of dollars that we raise for capital now. What percent of those dollars are we using to pay for the debt?
The state law says seventy five percent is the maximum. Your policy says fifty. So if you look down, um, if you look down in the part that talks about the school board, you'll see fifty percent of your total millage is a thirty five point nine million dollar maximum. And right now, today, you're paying about fourteen million. Can you see where that is?
Yes, okay.
What that means then, and that gets to kind of the point of this whole page, what that means is staying within your policy, you could push your debt payment up by another twenty one million dollars, which would yield about two hundred and twenty seven million dollars in revenue as a result of paying that debt. Does that make sense?
Yep.
So you, all that says you have a a significant amount of debt service headroom should you elect to use debt as one of the ways to to pay for growth. Um, the next page, page five, really talks primarily about deferring current projects and I give you some explanation as to how we come up with our current project list. I won't belabor that because I'm sure you read it. Um, the the highlighted line in that table in there though shows what amount of money over your current five-year plan is allocated to those competing projects. Uh, which includes, by the way, if you go to the nineteen twenty year, the forty million dollars for Elementary J. But you can see each year how much of the available competing uh resources we're using for competing projects.
Can, could you possibly split out the charter school payments?
Yes, yeah, and it's split out in the budget too, so I could easily add that line, you bet.
So I can see it.
Yes. The way this, just the flow of this chart, so I took the, and I took this right out of Al's budget. Um, started off with the with the revenue streams, added to that its fund balance and said, okay, here's how much money you have available to do capital things. From that, I first removed uh transfer in debt, which is something you you need to do. Uh, then I removed the departments who use capital money to fund their operations. That's the line that's called recurring costs. And what's left is what's available for compete, quote unquote, competing projects. That's kind of how that left column flows. And then I gave you some examples of what those things are, both above and below the line. So right now, today, we're doing things like funding the Venice Middle. Um, HVAC project, uh, the Brentwood cafeteria renovation is in there, phase two of Sun Coast Technical, Northport is in there. All those things are above the line, in addition to some things that we just don't have the money to get to. And I gave you some examples of those as well. Uh, like the Sarasota High Auditorium, like accelerating our lighting projects, those things that just don't make the cut. I then talked a little bit about deferred maintenance. Uh, deferred maintenance makes me nervous. Uh, it's dangerous. Uh, we already defer maintenance. I mean, every time we make a decision to change life cycle of painting or things like that, you are by definition deferring maintenance. Uh, but your capital assets are awful expensive and so deferred to, when you defer maintenance, we just need to be very careful about it. One of the tools you do have, however, is you could say to us, what, so what I tried to do in this table on page six is say, here are the big functional areas where we spend capital dollars. Over the five-year plan, here's how much money we'll spend in each of those areas. So for example, uh twenty one point seven million dollars will be spent on transportation over the life of the five-year plan. And then give you some idea of what we spend that money on. So if you were to come back and say, um, we want to pay for growth by deferring some maintenance. So we want you to consider extending the life of a school bus. Uh, we want you to consider not painting a school every year, paint it every ten years. Uh, don't plan to replace HVAC systems at the seventeen-year point, push it to twenty. Uh, we could do those kinds of things. I mean, there's implication, obviously, but deferring maintenance is a way to free up funds to pay for growth.
How about something like our computer technology where we went from a five-year plan and replacing our laptops to a four? How much does that impact our budget?
Well, and you could go back. So if you go to the technology line on that page, notice there's a pretty big number down there. It says over five years, we're paying eighty six million dollars. Uh, there's two components of your capital budget that are in there, the technology budget, the technology department's budget, and then the debt service that you use to pay for our computer replacement program. Uh, right now, today, that program is right at nine million dollars annually. So one of the options you could say, kind of under this broadheading of deferred maintenance, is um extend the timeline with which you replace computers. Right now, it's four years. If we went back to five, if you remember when we went from five to four, that was about a one point five million dollar annual cost. So if you said go back to five years, that would free up um the difference. I I very briefly included a discussion about proportionate share mitigation in here and I did it briefly because I think if it's something that the board wanted to talk about, it would require not only some education on your part and staff's part, but uh some additional thought. Uh, you do have the authority um under concurrency to ask developers to pay the proportionate share. We have never done it. Recall the timing of our inter-local, that was two thousand and eight, two thousand and eight. By that time, the economy had begun to slide. And so we've never really had an issue where there was a lot of development and pressure on school capacity. And so we've never used proportionate share. Uh, you can, um, it's pretty significant though. I mean, you actually have the ability to stop development. Um, I think before you did that, we'd want to educate ourselves better on what it looks like, how you would apply it, but it's certainly a tool that you have available. Uh, and then the final option, and maybe not the final, but the final one in read ahead was impact fees. We've talked about that already a lot this morning. Uh, I gave you a historical perspective on when we collected it, how it was collected, how we used it, the projects we used to fund. You actually began to collect impact fees in two thousand and five and you can see that over a seven-year period, the total we collected about twenty seven million dollars. And the projects that that money was spent on Woodland Middle School, Sun Coast Poly, Atwater, La Mark, uh, some property purchases, things like that, all associated, I think as Steve said at the very beginning, with growth-related projects. Now, I won't belabor impact fees because I think we talked enough about those. You can kind of see that the revenue that impact fees could or would generate and those came right out of Steve's presentation. Um, probably the most important part of that discussion though is the timeline. Uh, I mean, we, the board has got to do something proactively relative to impact fees. Uh, right now, there's a moratorium that sunsets in December. Uh, if that moratorium were to sunset, the county would then by ordinance go back to levying impact fees at the two thousand thirty two dollars per single-family home. If that's what you wanted to do, you don't have to do anything proactive, but that number is based on some awful old data. Thus, are asking Tindall Oliver to update our impact fee calculations, so. And I guess at the end of the day, here's how I feel, or here's where I feel where we are is each year, uh, we try to bring back to you a budget that does two things. It's responsive to what your goals are, uh, and that is fiscally viable. And we'll do that again in sixteen seventeen. I guess the two big questions for us is where is growth in your priorities? Because frankly, for the past four or five years, maybe longer than that, we haven't talked about growth. And then second is, given that there are lots of available options to pay for that growth, which are the options that you would like us to use as we consider how we make that budget work?
I I'm for one, am am a little surprised how the impact fee that was two thousand dollars and and when we were talking about whether or not to put a moratorium on that, we I somehow got the impression that maybe we we need to look at it because maybe it's even too high because we just haven't had that much growth. And then now we come back and instead of lowering the impact fee, we're we're more than tripling it. Um, uh, I'm I'm, it, I'm just quite surprised or taken aback uh by the differences in the impact fee of what it was or what we were. At least I was led to believe I I may have listened, you know, incorrectly. Um, but uh it 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 sounded like to me when we were saying, oh, let's put a moratorium on it because that might even be too high for what we're generating now to go from that two thousand to to over seven thousand.
Remember, the data that the current impact fee is based on is eleven years old. It's data from two thousand and four. So just economically, things have changed pretty dramatically. And I don't know when when the board talked about putting a moratorium on impact fees initially, um, I think the discussion was more about how do you continue to help the economy? What are actions the board can take to help particularly the construction segment of the economy? Then we were afraid the impact fee was too high. If you would have done an impact fee study in two thousand and six, would it have got you a very different number? Sure, I mean.
Well, I'm thinking if we had done an impact study in two thousand and thirteen or fourteen. You know, I I it it, I I was under the impression that the impact fee might have actually have gone down. And then now to see that it's going to be triple of what it was even is is a bit of a surprise to me.
And remember, and I think Steve used the word calculated impact fee. That's the maximum that I think that we could in court defend. Here's the data that would take you to a seven thousand dollar, seventy eight hundred dollar impact fee. Uh, the, I think the board has the ability to set that rate anywhere you want below that. So I don't think we necessarily say that the impact fee would be seventy eight hundred dollars. That's the maximum defendable.
I I I wasn't sitting on the board when it was set at the two thousand rate, uh, two thousand thirty two dollar rate. Um, when that was set, was that um at the the total estimated or or was that less than?
I honestly don't remember.
I guess it was.
Was it less? Al said it was less.
Yeah, I, yeah, at some point, perhaps Al could share with me what um the expected revenue was versus, not the revenue, the rate was versus what we adopted.
I think I want to look at this and talk perhaps offline with Al and and with you, Scott, and maybe some other people in our community because uh I want to get some feedback. A, I I am, uh, I don't want to defer maintenance. That scares me. Uh, I think we have been very good at at keeping our facilities in good shape and you know, penny wise and pound foolish, what happens if we don't keep those membranes replaced on those roofs and we start having leaks? And then we have the whole issue of of mold and other things. That's not very good for our students or our teachers. So I I am, uh, the the technology piece in that is the only thing that I could think of that that we might look at. Um, five years versus four, I don't know, maybe, maybe our IT department wouldn't like that very much, but that that's one issue for me. But but impact fees, I I personally am am still weighing these these issues, but I wouldn't feel comfortable with it at a hundred percent now. Uh, it wouldn't work for me. Um, and uh, and I really have to to look at this issue and uh the thing that concerns me is using the number, the nine seventy number for elementary schools. How many of our elementary schools actually have nine hundred and seventy students?
You you said six, right?
Four or five of twenty, of the twenty six, twenty seven that we have.
Twenty three, right?
Twenty three. Um, uh, so that that's of concern to me, um, you know, just just realistically. But um, um, I I really have to, I have to reflect on this and I have to sort of macerate a bit, if you will, to to come up with with my feelings on it. But I think, I think there shouldn't be any problem for us with some feedback from the community at the at the special uh, uh, community hearings and so forth to to get something done by that October day.
And and I definitely want to know what that number is on the expected growth of the revenue from new construction. Because, I mean, not only will we be getting that growth that year of the new construction, but we will be getting that increase, you know, for several years. So perhaps that increase in growth of new construction over ten years in bonded dollars. You know, like if we built a school in in twenty you know, like if we built a school in, in twenty-twenty-five for the construction that was from between twenty-twenty, and maybe that, that increase in growth for those ten years or fifteen years, we could use and say, well, we can bond out that increase of revenue for that, those times. So that, that dollar amount is very important to me as I look forward, how much revenue we are getting for the new construction.
I'll work with, I'll work with Mr. Widener starting today, and we'll come up with something and share it with the board and with superintendent.
Yeah, because I mean, I don't know how we can compare how to pull all these numbers together when that, that whole number is missing.
I did some, I did some kind of back-of-the-envelope calculations the other day about kind of that second five years, twenty-twenty-one through twenty-twenty-five. And just that if you, if we kept our, our ad valorem on the same glide slope that it's on today, about a six percent increase, that generates, and don't hold me to these numbers obviously because they're back-of-the-envelope, but it generates total revenue on the capital side, about seven-hundred-and-twelve million dollars over a five-year period. If you then back out your current debt service and transfer as it sits today, and you assume a, a service level that is like what it is today in facilities and transportation, et cetera, and what I did is just inflated their budgets by three percent in the out-years and took that out, it leaves you with a balance of, and Al's probably cringing as I'm saying this, but it leaves you with a balance of about three hundred million dollars. So if you said, if you said, we're going to do nothing but respond to growth, and we're going to use the increases in our tax roll base to do that, you could, in the second five years, if you made the decision to do nothing else, no other competing projects, no changes in service levels, just respond to growth. So I think to Frank's point, there, there is some money that's being generated by the increase in the tax roll that you could put towards growth, along with being able to bond some future money and an impact fee less than a hundred percent. I mean, I, I would almost encourage you to not look at any one of these tools in isolation, but how do they come together to solve your problem?
But, but there's also an increase in the property values. My, my home was going to go up three percent a year. You know, that's not new construction.
Yeah, understood.
And, and then, you know, the, the people who, you know, in businesses are going up. So I mean, I would want to back those numbers out because I think those dollars should be used to keep the, the level of service on the existing ones. So it's just new dollars that I want to look at. Maybe you can give us both numbers.
Sure.
But I'd like to look at new construction.
You bet. We'll work on that starting today.
I still have some questions that are unanswered that I'd like answered before I make a decision.
Okay.
And I've told them, I've reiterated them over and over again, so I'm sure you know what they are.
Go over them one more time, just so I am sure.
I want to know if a charter school is being built at Sarasota, no, Sun Coast College of Florida.
Okay.
Because that will alleviate the need to build there. I'd like to know if an elementary or a middle school at Thomas Ranch is being considered and how that is, how that will play out, because you keep telling me, no, 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 they can't do what they're saying. So I'd like to, I'd like to have something in writing, at least a finished understanding of what it is that they're going to do for the K through eight and how we can work with them.
Okay.
Okay. And I'd like to know about the school in Lakewood Ranch. What are we, we're building an elementary there?
No, but we have property that has been, that has been passed to the board at Lakewood Ranch.
It was the fifth, it was the fifth elementary, the last one to be needed in terms of, so it's.
Okay, so we don't need that for five years.
And it's really in that ten-year only because it's, you need to have the money in place in order to start the process. It probably would be not open until after the ten-year.
Right.
So we don't need that for ten years, so I.
Bridget?
Well, I agree with Ms. Goodwin. I think there's a lot of information to digest and, you know, offline speaking with you and Mr. Widener and members of the community. With all of the information that, and I know you've kept good notes, so anything that we are waiting for, what's our expected turnaround time so we can take that information and incorporate it in our conversations in the community and with you guys?
I don't see any of this as being a tremendous amount of work. If I can spend a little bit of time with Al, I, I would think that by the, today's Tuesday, I would think by the end of the week, is Jane, what's his body language? You're looking at him. Okay. I, I would think by the end of the week, we ought to be able to give you an interim update on some things. Is that fair?
Yeah.
Right, we have a Friday, thank goodness.
Be done, Bridget?
Mm-hmm.
I just want to say, and if you couldn't tell by my earlier comments, my feelings haven't really changed in years on this. I think impact fees are grossly unfair. I think we ought to call them a construction tax because that's what it is. It's not, governments always have a, like our computer refresh, instead of saying, we're buying new computers, we say an impact fee when we, what we mean is a tax on construction because that's what it is. Developers don't pay it, the people buying the house pay it. And probably what frustrates me more than anything is I've lived here my entire life. If I go build a new house tomorrow, I have no impact on the schools, I have no impact on roads, I have no impact on libraries, yet I have to pay an impact fee. It's always bothered me and it always will bother me. I think that there is a lot, and I know I'm on the wrong side of this because the great thing about taxes are the ones that, the most fair tax you have is the one that somebody else pays. And we're talking about, we're going to tax people that are moving here. We're not taxing anybody that's here because unless they build a house, which odds are very, very few people in this room or in the community are going to pay it. So I just, deep down, I think they're extremely unfair. I think it's a real cop-out for governments because you're charging somebody a tax that doesn't live here yet, and everybody else gets, doesn't have to pay for growth and that kind of thing. I think that you build new houses, you get increased tax base. So I just, my daughter built a house, finished it about a year ago, and she had to pay, she was in Manatee County, she had to pay a Manatee County school impact fee, even though she was born here and I was born here, and that would be the natural progression of things. I might be wrong on Manatee schools. Okay, sorry. Well, the point is still, she still paid impact fees for other things, for the roads that she still drives on and for the libraries that she still had or may or may not use and those kinds of things. So I just, philosophically, I just find impact fees to be extremely unfair and didn't support them in two thousand and four, and I don't support them now. And I know I'm going to get a lot of grieve over it, but hey, I'm not running again, don't really care, so.
But we also, we also know that this community has a lot of people who are baby boomers in retirement age who have a similar philosophy to what you're talking about, Frank. And, and that by and large is what a lot of those new homes are going for, is they're going into the hands of the retirement generation, so has to be taken into consideration.
And that actually, Joan, was part of my notes. I just was running long and ranting, but, you know, a vast majority of these new houses being built and all these developments, even outside the developments, don't have kids in them, yet they're paying for them too. And, you know, I, I know we get the emails from retirees that say they shouldn't pay school taxes, but we're not talking about school taxes here. We're talking about building schools for an impact that they supposedly have that they don't have because they don't have kids, so. Anything else? Did you guys want to take a short break?
Yes. Please.
Can we start again at eleven, please?
Sure.
Chase, Chase. I have credit card with Chase so I can do the same day. I'm sorry. But I think I'm still around on that. I probably need to start with the nine fifteen. I don't know who the hell it is. Whoever. You know, I, I'm getting something that tells me that some scan went through and they found this many errors and I need to update it. And I'm like, who are you and why are you telling me? There's a little person up there that it's, I can't, I move it down, out of the way, but it takes a while to get it to get out of the way. And I'm trying to think what it's called. Oh, shoot, I'm, I'm going to, but it, it, yeah, it keeps telling me, it's on my laptop. I, I should, I should, I should ask Jane if she gets it too. I'm, I'm thinking it's popped up after the last time I brought it down. So I thought maybe she added it.
You know, Joe Cooper's FSH, he started working at Gateways at two thousand and forty. And I was like, is there background for your website? So there'd be a bunch of blue.
Love hearing about these numbers.
Early in the day, fast.
I have had like a non-February for like a week and it's really off.
Otherwise, sick?
No, no, no. So it's like a headache that just lingers, really annoying. So if I'm grumpy today, that is why. Well, my husband's had a problem too, so I'm like, maybe we're living in a house.
My sister had vertigo, she went to the doctor. The doctor said it was allergies.
That's what I think it is in my daughter's music. For us to both have that kind of, it's not like a massive one, it's just ears. Does that door always lock or is it just locked today? Because I've keep seeing.
In the back?
Yeah.
I think it's typically locked. I think it usually gets unlocked for the morning. Yeah, I have it just for, just for like a day. Yeah, miserable.
They used to, that's awful. Well, that's all inner ear, right? I had, they thought I had, when I was young, it was migraines, it was years to date. Truly? Well, honestly, I think it was the doctors that reached, I mean, after going through every testing, we were like, uh, okay, well, you have this. And not just being migraines, but, oh, that's like all the inner ears. Yeah, no fun.
I was asked to come before the, for the discussion, and I wanted to come, because I want to be here, I want to be there, I want to be that part of the conversation. Probably a, like a score, his board, losing a plate of everything is probably something that makes it right.
Is it a hard five-thirty for that meeting? Is it here? Is it?
It's a hard five-thirty. It could be here because it's just, it can, it can't be anyone other than the reporter or us.
Mr. Robinson? Yes. Okay, I just didn't know.
It's cram, but, but I.
I was butting in, I was like, oh my God, I'm going to come in ten, I'm going to be like on the third or fourth item.
No, I, I had a feeling it was going to be.
You guys were like on page three.
Yeah, well, I'm glad it was, I, I don't want to rush through.
I know, I agree.
I loved it.
Yes, I was shocked.
I loved it. It's like, whoa. For Charlotte.
Well, because the last time he said, oh, you guys are going to bring back something that's defensible, like you did last year, I thought, oh my God, he said, that was an odd comment to make, because that's.
You're honest, yeah.
Yeah, that, that would imply, he said it's defensible, that would mean that you're. Good lunch with Dr. Shelley again on Friday. Hello, her.
I don't remember, I was talking to Johnny on S P, a send fellow from Arkansas that came in, that I met with and talked about this with you, and we were talking about some leadership in our district. She met her, I know that, and I had her on my mind, talking about her. Yes, I am. I'm with her.
I follow a side for her because we were talking about how her philosophy, her philosophy is, is not just guide to initiative, but to make them members of society, care for the future, it's like.
It's so much more, she looks at it as a full circle.
But I could, I could see her fighting with people like y'all, she's like, no, just need to educate these kids. She's like, no, it's bigger than that.
I agree, and that's why, well, and I, it's funny, I was getting ready this morning, I need to follow up with her because I know they have the foundation, but I know.
They just started.
Well, but that worked for me a long time here, and I haven't heard anything else. And I said, I hope that however I can, private side, going out.
We turned over a check out, she never asked for the right to the foundation, she always knew.
But I don't think, I don't know if they've been established yet or what, because they were talking about, but I think they'll help her get some of the funds that she wants, like I said, I think the A C program is really big, it's important to her. She, I mean, she gave me one, not one, but it's actually a complete and major priority.
That's what we're meaning about, what priorities, I'm like, how wrong.
But I want to find out where the foundation is because whatever we can do to help if she wants to use the foundation, we would know from a financial standpoint, if it's better to direct the, well, direct to the school, direct to the financial.
Good job, Frank. Good talking.
Okay, let's go.
Okay.
Find the foundation.
That's last thing, because then you can give a downwind, because stuff like that.
It's eleven o'clock.
I'm on time.
Just, yeah, and I'm just embarrassed, I thought I was holding this up, I should have known better.
Where's your cap?
Excuse me, Frank, are you going to resume in just a minute? I have station warning and interview about road planning, overall, kind of an overview thing, but I'm going to tell the addition.
All right.
You have to wait till after the workshop?
See what I did, I fell.
So you can maybe.
I was wondering.
I fell in public, straight on my face.
Was it slipped, like, was it?
Okay, we're going to restart now at eleven o'clock.
I tripped on my sandals.
Superintendent?
Laura Kingsley, our new executive director of elementary, has instituted a task force that is looking at several areas of concern and looking at strategies and research that will help us move forward on a number of items. So she is here to share the work of that task force. Laura?
Okay, good morning, Superintendent White and school board members. I have with me Natalie Roca and Linda McLeod, principal at Cranberry. Both of them are on the task force with me. And the purpose of this presentation is just to update you on the work of the task force on the achievement gap in elementary schools. And we have fifteen minutes that we would like to present, so you might be able to make up some of your lost time, depending on how many comments or questions you may have. We examined current evidence-based research on the issues that affect the achievement gap. And then we summarized the suggestions that have strong potential for closing the gap. What we found is well documented in the research that the issues that affect the achievement gap are related to the underlying causes of poverty. So the numerous issues that surround poverty impact the achievement gap. And what we sent you is an updated report on our notes and some attendance data on chronic absences, the resources that schools, the principals listed they have at their schools, a budget, a preliminary budget on what it might cost to replicate the Eagle Academy for summer learning academies at three schools, and then a graphic. And I'd like to draw your attention to the colored graphic. What we did there was we tried to capture the key elements, and that's what will be focused, our summarization on. So we looked at the student, the teacher, the school, and the parent. And Natalie is going to begin for us, looking at highlighting.
There's a reason I don't have a mic, I'm sure of. But I know how to shift it over. Good morning, everyone. This will be easy and smooth after your hot, heavy, earlier session. So when I heard, you know, this woman, Dr. Kingsley, is just driven and she's on a mission and she's so focused, but at first, when she approached several of us, it was, you know, all I heard is task force committee, my eyes glazed over, but then she said research, so she had me at research. So I got to do some research, and what, not surprising, the most important and the most impactful element on student achievement is the teacher. Teacher quality, not just about the individual and their expertise, it's quality teaching. So we looked at all the factors that impact quality teaching, and there are a few of them. And in the literature, they also have suggestions and strategies for how you can address it. And being the realistic folks that we are, we looked at those things that had the most promise and the ones that were more doable for us at the district level, you know, immediately doable. So the five key areas are recruiting, hiring, and retaining quality teachers, a lot of it will be H R, and we'll be working with them some more. Teacher preparation, P D, teacher evaluation, our favorite topic, and teacher empowerment. So under teacher retention and hiring and recruiting, we all face that challenge of finding interested, talented individuals who are, can be drawn into the teaching profession. And our colleagues at the universities and colleges have been telling us that there's enrollment is down in the teacher prep programs. So a lot of that is, it's not rocket science, but it's, it's that, that struggle of campaigning and recruiting and maybe talking up the teaching profession as opposed to what we've seen recently to attract them. But in terms of the achievement gap, the research shows that having a diverse workforce also has an impact. And again, it's that challenge of attracting qualified individuals who are interested and maybe providing incentives to attract them to these high poverty schools, whether it's tuition grants, and, you know, some type of loan forgiveness. And we need to pursue that with H R in our colleges to see what we can offer. And of course, there's that, you know, challenging area of differentiation in salary, which again, that's gonna be Scott Lempy's challenge, not the task force, I was assured. So the next big ticket item is teacher preparation, and again, we know that that's so important. And we do have a pretty awesome teacher preparation program for our new teachers. But one area that, and also P D, under the leadership of Kelly Ellington, our P D director, looking at ways to enhance, improve, and bring it up a couple notches. And the research shows to suggest that we look at the duration of the program and maybe looking at some way of measuring the impact. We're not very good at quantifying the effectiveness of our programs, whether it's teacher preparation for the beginning teachers or our veteran novice teachers. So it's not easy, but it's something we need to tackle. The, I typed up my notes, but I'm not looking at them, turn around. Professional development, the research shows that not only is P D an important factor in improving quality teaching, it's also a very important, it's very highly associated with why quality teachers stay in the profession. And at first I thought, gee, I can see the impact on quality teaching, but why so much on, on the teachers saying that this is the reason I'm staying? And then I thought about it, well, you're committed individual, and you're committed individuals, you're focused, passionate folks, are always seeking professional growth opportunities, I mean, this is what they do, it's in their DNA. And the one thing you can't do is for that seasoned veteran teacher who knows what they're doing, if you have this P D that's not aligned to what they need and it's not meaningful, they can see right through that. And so that's one of the factors, that again, we can use that as a way of keeping our teachers to make it meaningful for them. The other factor is, I think we know very well, aligned to standards, based on data, both our teacher data and student data. And again, being systematic, and that's one of the charges we got from our superintendent to start doing that. This, in this year, our I I S, you know, our instructional improvement system, the last piece of it is that P D component, so we're finally getting to it. And I know that Denise and Kelly are very happy about that. Again, more systematically and using data to align those systems so that we can easily look at needs and prioritize. And as with the college prep programs, doing a better job quantifying how effective it is and how quality, the level of quality of our P D programs. So that's a, one of those that's doable, but, you know, challenging. Teacher evaluation, I'll just skip over that baby, no. A lot of the literature focuses a lot on teacher evaluation, but again, the important thing is using it to improve the practice. Using it for feedback, using it for all the good things any, a good evaluation system can do. And again, the superintendent's position and your position has been to minimize the negative things about teacher evaluation in Florida and focus on the positive things, on use it to provide relevant and timely information to teachers and to make it about tying it to their needs and not about the ugliness, that's gonna be a Scott Lempy issue, not mine. Is he still here? He likes, he likes it when I tease him, oh, he left for a reason, so. So we know about all those good things, see, I even head on here, ugh, I have it on my notes. I do, look. Okay. I told her I would behave and not be too comical today, I'm sorry, it's in my DNA as well. And then the other area that surprised me as a researcher was the teacher empowerment. And sometimes we always wonder, why do these teachers stay in some of these challenging schools? And it's that pride in their neighborhood, or again, that, that fulfillment. And the number one reason teachers, I mean, salary's important, don't get me wrong, compensation's important. But the number one reason they said they stayed in teaching was personal fulfillment. And they talk about things like honor the teacher, recognize the teacher, you hear them at our teacher of the year ceremonies, it's like, it's hard. And it's not just about the academics, it's about the family and emotional issues and social issues. And, you know, people of high caliber, that's all it takes sometimes, it's a little, some, some, some support and, and value my expertise. So they, the research shows about things, positive working climate, opportunities for leadership roles, but in the classroom in the school too. The experts that are very competent, knowledgeable folks, they wanna share their expertise, you feel valued. I mean, I risked my life on those little prop planes flying to Tallahassee because I was an expert on the panel, made me feel good. You know, I'm not a, I'm a, you know, kind of, not a good flyer, so I risked my life for that because I cherish that opportunity. So those are things that, that we know make sense, providing resources and support, some of that. I think we do a good job in Sarasota County focusing on the classroom environment and the learning environment. I know when, when my budget requests are turned down, it's always, Lori says, it's because our money goes first to our students and teachers. And I get it, so then I, you know, I'm sad, but I back away. So those are all things, and they all have to be aligned and integrated. So these are all things that we know have an impact, it's just a matter of pursuing some of these in a more systematic way. See, I always behaved, I was good.
Good morning, everyone.
Put your mic.
Here, um, oh, good morning, everyone. First of all, I wanna, would like to thank Laura for her vision. I feel it's about time that we're focused on all of these areas that impact our students, our minority students, and the gap between how our minorities are performing and our other students are performing, so. Thumbs up for Laura, thank you, Laura. I'm going to be focusing on some of the things our schools are doing and can do. But firstly, I'd like to give thanks to the support we're getting from the Patterson Foundation and the Community Foundation. We've partnered with them with the Sun, Sun Coast Campaign on Grade Level Reading to address the early learning opportunities, summer slide, and also attendance. And attendance is a real concern. Looking at the chart, it's a concern for especially these Northport schools. And when I think about the attendance and what kinds of things we can do to get our students to school, we have some challenges. Some of it is bus issues and transportation issues, some of it is health issues, also some is parent apathy. So it's a challenge, and there's some things that we plan to do to encourage our kids to get to school. And some of the suggestions were recognition for targeted students, not for all of them. Because we've had programs at Cranberry where we gave an award or recognized students for perfect attendance. And what we, we, what the result of it was, a lot of kids were coming to school sick, and that's not what we want. We wanna target those students that tend to not come to school and it's not a health issue, or they're not sick, they're just not coming to school. So that's something we have to work on. We're going to partner with the Manatee, with Manatee County on the Everyday Counts Program, which is a really great program. It's a poster contest, and I was thinking, what would be a great slogan, probably something, we're the Cougars? So something like, cool Cougars go to school. That sounds like something that maybe my kids would really like to do. But this program, is it there? This program addresses chronic absenteeism, so we're really excited about that, and I'm looking forward to that. We're also exploring implementing some bus incentives with Ellery and Dee Dee Preston. And also principals are exploring some alternatives to suspension, out of school suspension, that's something we really need to work on. Our principals are looking at ways of expanding the parent university and opportunities for parents, such as ESOL classes, G E D classes, and computer classes. That builds relationships with our families and our parents. Also expanding ways to involve our minorities in the accelerated programs. This fall, Emma Booker will be implementing or piloting the Negliary non-verbal screener, and it's a screener that can be used for students in K through twelve. And this screener, we hope, will identify some students that may be gifted or students we, that can be placed into the A W C programs. This pro, this screener is, what I like about it, it is non-bias. And even our E L L students can be screened using this program because of the way the program is set up with patterns, using patterns. They test patterns and shapes and questions, not so mu, so much where students have to read. And so I think it's a really good program, and I'm looking forward to seeing the results of this program, so yay for Emma Booker. You'll be excited to know that we have some partnerships that have already been established. We have our four highest poverty schools, they're collaborating with our high S E S schools. And this is to provide libraries for our students at home, home libraries. And I think this is an exciting program, so we have Tatum will be partnering with Goshio. Other partnerships are like Southside and Tuttle, Ashton and Emma. And Pineville will be partnering with Alta Vista, this is a good program and it's good for kids. I, I'm really excited about all the task force has been working on, there's a lot more, but these are some that are pretty near and dear to my heart, especially encouraging our principals to do all we can to get more minorities into our accelerated programs and into the gifted programs. If we can find just the right assessment, because all assessments don't work for all children, just the right assessment, I think we have something really special here, so, thank you.
I just wanna summarize one thing and clarify. The task force was a directive by the superintendent, this was not my idea, and I love doing it. I know several of you had talked about it, so we're, we're really happy to be working so hard on it. And before your, your questions, I, I just wanna thank, thank you for your interest in trying to help us reach our children who are in poverty. And those are the children that, you know, their, their futures are really, they matter to not only the child, but to all of us. And I also wanna thank the Hensons and the Community Foundation because you have the preliminary budget there. Because of that four-year program that they did at Eagle Academy, we got some really great data on what will help us with summer learning loss. So, so now you may ask your questions.
This was very simple, I wanted to know, I didn't hear any partnerships in South County.
The, um, the replication of the Eagle Academy, we're calling them summer learning academies. We are looking at the four highest poverty schools, Alta Vista being one of them. So, you know, our research really emphasized that the issues with the achievement gap are poverty-related. So it was a logical choice to try the four. Of course, if you have money, we could go wherever you want to replicate.
I meant for the books, I mean, the, the sharing, like, Goshio and.
Those partnerships, they can be expanded. We were really excited to have several of our A Ps who took on that, the project of trying to work with the low poverty, the high poverty school with the high S E S school and try to develop relationships so that they maybe have some of their special groups at the school that are philanthropic in nature. We could expand it to others, you know, it's, we're just starting this work and I expect that that may be something that continues if we're successful on it.
I was just aware that I did not hear anything about South County.
Well, I, I will tell you one other thing that we are doing in South County that we didn't mention, but thanks to funding from the Gulf Coast Community Foundation, the Charles and Marjorie Baransik Foundation, and Keith and Linda Monda, who you met, who've done some, a lot of work in the community with summer, a campaign against summer hunger, and the swim program. They have funded a reading recovery project that we are starting and piloting at Cranberry, actually, and at Water, and then also at Tuttle. And that program provides intensive support to first graders, and it's very successful, it's out of Ohio State. And the research shows that children who enter that program, seventy-five percent of those children never need another day of remediation. So we're very excited about piloting that at the two South County schools.
I have several comments, questions, but while we're talking about books, I'll, I'll do mine for the books. I was shopping at Books-A-Million yesterday, and as I checked out, they asked me if I wanted to buy a book to donate to Gulf Gate School. So there are other things going on, and, and I don't know if that was initiated by the school going to the bookstore or how they reached out for that, but, and I also know that Coles Cares, those books, they will help, either give them that half price or something, if you could talk to the manager of the stores, they might help out. One thing that I did see that, that I questioned, it was something that bothered me from several years ago is, and I noticed it on page six. Kingsley, you said some media collections have not been weeded for over ten years. I was at a school one time when they were weeding out books that were over ten years old from their library, and they were taking out books that looked like they were in pretty good condition. One of them being, was a Peter Rabbit book, and I'm like, why would you get rid of Peter Rabbit? Because maybe you only read that at Easter time, but just because the book is over ten years old, it shouldn't be pulled out of a library. And I was told, oh no, that doesn't happen, but I was sitting there in that library that day and new-looking books were coming off the shelf. So I, I, that's just something that bugged me, and, and that happened several years ago.
Well, let me clarify, that, does, the statement that media collections haven't been weeded, some of them over ten years, does not mean to imply that they pull out books that are over ten years old.
Well, I'm, I'm thinking perhaps when this library was cleaned out, they misinterpreted how that was supposed to go because the shelves were then empty in that library. And that, that just didn't make sense to me, so I just wanna make sure that when somebody goes through the libraries, that they understand what it is they're supposed to be doing, that they don't just take all these books off the shelf. Cause to, to remove more than half of the books from that library in that school, I, I was just appalled.
We just weeded at Fruitvale before I left, and it was a, a pretty extensive project that Rob Manu, Manu-Gian? Manu-Gian helped us organize. And what we ended up weeding were books in disrepair that have been well-loved.
That's what I would've expected you to, but, and I, this may even have happened when I was a volunteer, not even on the school board yet, but. They, they took more than half of the books off the shelves, and I was just appalled. So I think somebody misinterpreted what it was they were supposed to be doing.
Well, Rob takes good charge of that now.
Good, thank you.
And we weed out a lot of nonfiction, because you can imagine the math science area.
That nonfiction doesn't matter, but.
Right, yeah.
Peter Rabbit wasn't nonfiction, and it's, um, I'm, I'm very interested in this, putting the high-quality teachers in the classrooms most in need. And, you know, I've been reading, you know, some districts are paying even ten thousand dollars more to put a stu, teacher in there. But I know too, that it isn't money that drives a good teacher. So I'm not sure what it is or how we go about that. But I also know that the teachers in these high. But I also know that the teachers in these high-poverty schools, sometimes, they put in so much more effort. And because it's in a high-poverty school, more money comes out of their pocket, less money comes in from the PTA and all that other, all those other resources. It's a lot harder for those teachers, and they don't get the feedback, I think, sometimes from the parents and whatnot. How are we going to go about getting those teachers into those classrooms? And then if we do have those teachers in those classrooms, I'd like to get a report back on the progress of that, you know, not just putting them there. Because I'm seeing that there's mixed responses in some of the other districts that have used that $10,000 carrot to put them into a classroom. And I'm not sure, and I definitely want to hear feedback on how we do that and what the results are of doing that.
Does anybody have a magic answer to that?
Yeah, we don't have an answer yet, because we haven't really started it yet, have we?
And you're absolutely correct, the research is mixed on that. On the one hand, they talk about, you know, appropriate compensation systems. And you know, in Florida, we're supposed to start moving in that direction. But then they also talk about the fact that it's not the money and the bonus that keeps a qualified person in there. So there is some work to be done in that area, and I really don't know how you kind of.
I think in reality, what happens is these, you know, these are the schools that more often get the new teachers. And because of the workload and the lack of feedback, I think they're more likely to leave or they take that job to get their foot in the door for the district and then transfer out. It's a hard job, and we have to do something to get those good teachers there. Because I know what happens, the good teachers end up, you know, the PTA knows about them, the community knows about them, and they start requesting those teachers. And so those teachers get the good kids in their class, or there's even some teachers I've heard that actually request only good students, and if a student acts up, out of my classroom. They only want good kids in their classroom. And how do you get those good teachers to take those challenging students?
There is some legislation proposed, some of you may have heard about this, that would fund STEM teachers by forgiving their college loans in eight years a percentage or something. I've heard that, but I haven't heard anything, generally speaking, that would help us with poverty, which is really our biggest problem, I think.
I think that there was a program for Pell Grants for Title I schools. Is that still in effect? Several years ago it was.
Not aware. But certainly, we're, you're going to have to be creative in this area, since we don't have a large pot of money, and I'm not sure that the research is definitive in terms of that's what is required. But I think it also, we also need to analyze the data, looking across our schools, looking at the reasons people transfer, what's the rate. So I think we need to dig down before we try to solve a perceived problem. What specifically is it, what causes teachers to want to stay? Because we have some teachers that spend entire careers at high-poverty schools. What are the elements of those individuals that find it very rewarding work? And what can we do to support those teachers in a way that might not always be in dollars and cents? So I think there's work to be done, which is what's so great about the task force, is because they're incorporating research, what are best practices, and doing this analysis thoughtfully, rather than jumping to a solution too quickly.
I don't really know, and maybe this is too much of a topic, maybe we need to include this later, but I don't know how much money we get for Title I and how much flexibility we have with our Title I dollars. I know that this document talks about the next phase of the Alta Vista project and using part of that as seed money, if you will, for each of those other schools in the amount of $50,000. So I just didn't know how much flexibility. Everything is so inflexible most times, I didn't know what flexibility we had.
There is some flexibility, there is some stipulations of what we, how we must divide up the money. There must be money dedicated for parent involvement, some money for professional development. So there's some requirements, but then there's flexibility in terms of some school allocated dollars and how they make decisions. So I think we can certainly come back to the board. I think it is an area that districts are doing different things with their Title I dollars, sometimes saying district-wide, we're going to focus the dollars in this area. We have traditionally allowed our schools to supplement the instructional program, either through teachers that are providing remediation. So it's been hiring additional teachers, doing different things during the 180-day, but there's options available. So I think it's worthy of some discussion and analysis. What do we project in terms of future Title I dollars, which is always a scary thing, as we sometimes worry about cuts in those. And we've made conscious decisions not to spread the money too thin, because you can basically, that cut line is a decision we make. It's very disruptive when a Title I school becomes a non-Title I school in terms of losing that, those dollars. So we're very careful, we would have, and we've just recently, you know, had that situation with Toledo Blade, because we would have had to add another school that had gone before Toledo Blade. And we know that if you dilute the money too much and try to do too many things, you might not really have the impact. On the other hand, we need to evaluate what we're doing, I believe, in Title I. I think it's an excellent question, one we've asked ourselves. Are we making the impact with these dollars that is measurable and significant so we can make good decisions? So although I am all about collaborating and working with our principals and giving them a say in that decision-making process, I think we need to support them with the data that shows, show us, how can we figure out, what is the outcome? What is the benefit we're seeing with those dedicated dollars in those schools? How can we measure that? And are we doing the best things to improve this achievement with those dollars? And I think that's a very good conversation that we need to expand upon.
My next question would be, we did some summer school work with students in third grade that needed some work on reading, correct? How did that work? How did they perform?
I don't have the exact data, but we had, if I remember right, we had thirty-five percent of the kids, the third graders, passed the SAT-10 at a high enough level that they automatically were promoted, compared to last year, which was closer to twenty-five percent. So don't quote me on that, but that's what I recall. We had reorganized the summer reading camp, and it was very well-received. The teachers spent a lot of time collaborating on the needs of the children. They used iReady throughout the summer to progress monitor. So from all accounts, it was a very successful summer program this summer.
Yes, I just wanted to say, when I read this report, I said, oh, my God, this is it. This is the roadmap, this is what we need to be doing to get our schools, our low-poverty schools online. I started writing hearts next to my keys. It just impacted me that much. It's like reconsider revoking reassignments during the school year for behavioral concerns. So you're going to take the kid out of here and put him back over here, and they're going to have the same concerns, the same problems. Why not deal with it here and stop moving the kid all around? The need for social workers, I know the need for social workers, I've known that for a long time. And they do much more than just take family assessments, they work with the families. And I think that that's a priority. We need more, how many, like one, sorry, I'm really passionate about this, and that's why I'm getting like this. We need more than one social worker for every three or four schools. I mean, it's just impossible for them to be able to handle that. And I know it all takes money, but if we're talking about making improvements, I mean, we just have to be honest with what it is that we need to do in order to see those improvements. And that is one of them. I'm looking for my hearts. You all talked about, you all talked about Gold Stars. Implement the early warning intervention, we all talked about that. Here's another one. Build a well-organized, consistent volunteer program at the title schools and bring all volunteer efforts under one leadership effort. What I find in some of the schools, because remember, for JFCS, I run mentoring programs. So I get volunteers and place them in some of the schools as mentors or tutors. They're not always accepted. We've got to make teachers understand that they're there to help, and they can help. So we have to open up that discussion with teachers to make them more acceptable for kids, for people going into the schools and working with the students, because that will be a tremendous help. And the school-wide positive behavior support plan. Ensure it's utilized by all staff at all schools. I mean, there has to be some consistency there. I love what Dr. Shirley, not Dr. Shirley, Dr. Shelley is doing at Booker High School with how she's keeping her students in school. And there's no such thing as out-of-school suspension right now, or very limited. And she's been phenomenally successful, her graduation rate has increased. So I mean, there are things that we can do to help these kids, instead of just moving them from place to place. I'll stop there, because I have more hearts, but somebody else can talk.
Well, I will reiterate Mrs. Zucker's statements. When I first read this, when it was emailed out to everyone in, I guess, mid-July, it got me very excited. I think that we've talked for a long time, and the community hears the achievement gap as a, you know, just a word, but what are we going to do about it? So this is very solution-based, and it's a huge, there's a lot to tackle. There's some that are immediate need, and then there are some that are long-term. And I could not be happier that the task force is comprised of a variety of community members and administration and staff. And I think that's the way we really get out there and make people aware that it does take more, it takes everybody to make this happen. I, one thing that, and so I've read this probably more times than I could even tell you, and each time I get equally excited. But one thing that I found was staggering was the absenteeism rates, staggering. And I know in conversations with other, you know, the generous community foundations and the Patterson Foundation that we work with, there are a variety of different initiatives that we have that, for even the teachers, to find out what's causing those students not to get to school. And they have a small amount of a stipend to help that circumstance. So I wanted to see if you guys could dive in a little bit more, I know you touched on it. What are some of the things we're looking at to really make that impact? And again, you know, looking at these numbers, and like you said, South County, really just, and what can we do from, you know, as board members and as community members to help tackle that? Because I think that's a substantial issue.
It's actually going to come in front of you soon. We're going to ask you to make a proclamation of having September be Attendance Awareness Month. So that will be presented to you, as hopefully you'll be on board with that. The campaign for, the Sun Coast Campaign for Grade Level Reading has made that initiative with both Manatee, and they're hoping that we will join them. I will tell you that this data, it is staggering. And when you, whenever you see numbers like that in front of you, it means we need to go deeper, right? Because it's really about the principal getting this data. Historically, we've gotten data that says, okay, at your school, Cranberry, you had ninety-six percent attendance rate. That sounds pretty darn good. But the truth is, when you go down and look at the number of children who are chronically absent, which is defined as ten percent of the school year, eighteen or more days, then you start to wonder what's happening. And that's what we need principals to do, is wonder about each of the children. Here's the data, but now we have to dig deep and look at each individual child and say, what is your situation? There's no easy solution to this, this is hard work, this is one at a time thought about a child. It could be nationally, we know that children from poverty have asthma issues, dental issues that prevent them from coming to school because they really are not well or they're in pain. And so once we figure out, you know, to the child level what the issue is, some of the data may be, you know, my parent took me out for two weeks and we went to Europe. Well, okay, they probably got a lot more out of that Europe vacation educationally than they may have even two weeks in school. Those probably are not the kids that we're anxious about. But we're anxious about the child who's got some difficulties getting to school that we can address, we can help the family address. So there's no easy answer, except to dig deep and look at each individual child that makes up that number of seventy-seven. Who are you, you know, and what is your story?
Following up on a few things that Caroline mentioned. One is that not all teachers seem to be accepting of mentors or even helping with some of the volunteers. I was just talking to somebody last night who said, you know, he was a reading mentor at, you know, one of our elementary schools for seven years, and just wasn't feeling appreciated, and at the end of the year, not even so much as a thank you, hope you come back next year. The teachers have to make sure that they thank those pals, volunteers, or the volunteers that come in from any organization, and make them feel welcome, and ask them to come back the next year. Let them know how much they've helped. My husband tutors at our church, and the boy, he's tutored now for three years. The teacher puts notes in his homework, this is what we're working on now. Oh, and this is how he's done. So even though he's not even in the school, she communicates with somebody that she knows who's working with him. That is so important, I believe. Another thing that concerns me is you talk about the Title I dollars, and I understand that Title I dollars come because of a school is over, is it eighty percent of poverty?
It, what we, each district looks at the poverty levels and decides what level they're going to focus their Title I. We do elementary. If you exceed, is it seventy percent, seventy-five percent? You must, no matter what the level, that's why Booker Middle is a Title I. Then we just, we look at the dollars, and we start going down from the top and make a cut line. So there is no set percentage, you just have to go in the order for the level until you feel that that's as far as you're able to appropriate.
So are we appropriated by the number of students we have living in poverty or to the number of high-poverty schools?
The census data drives the appropriation. So that's why sometimes after, a number of years after a census, there may be some adjustments. So that's certainly, how we distribute the dollars is determined in the process I outlined. But the pot of money is driven in a formula by the federal level based on census data.
Because that's something else that they're looking at on the federal level, is taking those dollars. You know, they think that if, you know, Johnny lives in this place and his poverty, that that $2,000 goes to whatever school he is. But it doesn't necessarily go to that school, because we focus those dollars together at a school. Because they're even looking at taking and giving those Title, there was, I think, three different amendments that were offered on the rewrite of No Child Left Behind this past month, month before. Take and start giving those out in vouchers. To take out of our school district again, to follow the child. And we can see, especially when we're looking at how we take those dollars and put them into the school on a school-wide basis, not on a child-by-child, it just doesn't make any sense, because you take that $2,000 and take it to this private school and put it in, it doesn't make as much sense as using it and focusing it on the programs that we're looking at, even though the Title I doesn't come near enough to pay for what it is we need to do at these schools. It just bothers me all the time that they keep wanting to change how we get those dollars.
Can I just clarify one other aspect, since you brought up the private schools? We also are required to look at all the eligible private schools, and that's actually increased in terms of eligibility. We, they also get the use of this funds by us allocating teachers that go out and service the students in the areas. So private schools are, as required by federal law, part of our Title I distribution. We do it through that mechanism, and they are eligible by. We do it through that mechanism and they are eligible by the, the school data.
But we send out a, a, a teacher that we know is going to be helping them in those specific areas.
Correct, correct.
Thank you very much.
I have one other question, please. I am still concerned about South County schools. And we have, we have a high absentee rate of South County schools. We have some schools, elementary schools, that are lower grade-wise than the high-performing although-poverty schools in North County. So maybe we can start by, and I know we're, we're carefully looking at next summer for, for the, for additional schools in that program. But perhaps we can start making some changes to trying to get more volunteers in South County, which has always been a concern of mine. I tried to get people to, to mentor students in South County because I've mentored, you know, some students in Northport and didn't have much success with that. So I think we need to start with getting more volunteers. I know we've got a great volunteer program at Alta Vista and other schools, but we really need, I think, to promote that volunteerism perhaps. And maybe there's some ways that we can do getting ready for doing or moving in the, the way that we have these other, other four schools in the future.
I'd, I'd like to follow up on Jane's comment. I'd like to follow up on Jane's comment because I've been trying to get volunteers, mentors and tutors for Heron Creek Middle School. I have zip. I've gone to Rotary, Kiwanis, I mean, every club going and I cannot, I've gone to the police department and we cannot find volunteers for Heron Creek. So there's definitely a problem in South County with volunteers.
I just wanted to mention, Jane, in response to your comment and yours Caroline, we're piloting some different things at some of the schools. And for instance, Atwater is looking at working with the Education Foundation to train volunteers to help with the iReady component of the student's computer lab, which would allow the teacher to be present while the, the volunteers are helping in an organized way. And sometimes volunteers love that where they're not responsible for a child who has significant learning needs, but instead they can help out individual students as they're working on a computer program while the teacher is remediating in the room with a child who really needs the teacher's guidance. So we're looking at some, some unusual partnerships in that way. I also just want to mention one thing on the budget that we did with the replication model. We had put in there fifty to sixty children for this budget. And that really is dependent on the number of children in the class. I'm sure you knew that, but really, truly, fifty children could be served by that budget if there were ten in a class. So if you went up to eighteen in a class, that same budget could serve eighty children. So it really should have said fifty to eighty children depending on whether you have ten per class or eighteen. So as you look at that budget, I, I hope you will make that note and I'm sorry to have not caught that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thanks for your time.
So the board may have heard that the district is entertaining the possibility of a new district logo for a variety of reasons. And so I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Leatherman to introduce Mina to the group. Mina doesn't get a chance to.
We know each other.
Good, I figured. So if you would begin, Mr. Leatherman.
Okay. Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Superintendent White, members of the board. I'm Gary Leatherman, the Communications Director for the Sarasota County School District. My colleague for today's presentation is District Online Communication Specialist, Mina Azerab. Our department spends a lot of time producing news releases, television programming, websites and other forms of communication, but we don't believe that we've been as proactive in marketing as we feel we need to be to respond to the competitive realities of modern education. We're here today to share some of our ideas about marketing and branding for the Sarasota County schools and to present the first step in that process, which is the refresh of the district logo. The district logo is a symbol that reflects the brand. A brand is a solid, long-term foundation for district communications to grow around. It's the district's reputation. The logo is the symbol that expresses the district's personality. It should be accessible, friendly and memorable. It should establish expectations and instill pride. It should stimulate an emotional response to continuously reinforce the positive reputation of the district. At the National School Public Relations Association Annual Seminar and Convention in Nashville this year, there was a lot of conversation about marketing schools. And one of the quotes that came out of that conversation, I'll, I'll read to you now. "Parents don't care about test results as much as we care. Parents want to know if you're going to help their child become a healthy, happy individual. They care about things like character education and safety. We need to talk more about those things and less about test results." Not that we want to discount test results being as academically successful as we are, but we want to intersperse other concepts with the more sort of left-brain focus that we've had of late. When we did a survey about the logo, we got questions from people on the staff. And I just wanted, and I put that in your packet, the questions and answers, but I'd like to run through those. The first question being, why should we refresh the logo? And the reason is that we're redesigning the logo as a first step in taking more proactive approach to marketing schools. The Sarasota County School District is a very progressive, temporary, contemporary school system that provides caring, warm, safe and stimulating environment for students. We deliver a very high-quality education service, but we need to do a better job of communicating that message to our parents and community. We must respond to the realities of competition if we're going to maintain our enrollment and our corresponding ability to provide services. Question two, was the new logo created in-house? Yes, it was. It was created by the District Online Communication Specialist, Mina Azerab, who is a graduate of the Ringling College of Art and Design and extremely talented and knowledgeable about modern design. So we're very lucky to have Mina's services available because if any of you have ever been affiliated with an organization that's gone through the process of creating a new logo, you know that it can be an extremely expensive and time-consuming process. This has not been and we don't expect it will be. Third question is, what are the plans for phasing in the logo? And there was a lot of concern expressed from people who know how strapped we are for money in the district to say, if you do a new logo, are you going to start throwing out reams of material and printed stuff and, and all of that? And the answer to that is no, we're certainly not. We've already really made one transition from using the traditional board seal to the more stylized logo that we use now, the more contemporary typeface that is the logo that we use on our stationery and on our website. We will immediately incorporate the new logo into all of our electronic communications, but anything that's printed will continue to carry the old logo until someone requests that it be replaced. So there won't be any question of material being wasted in this transition. And then the final question is, how much is this going to cost? The cost will simply be the staff time involved in developing the logo and collecting the feedback that we've already collected and more to come, I'm sure. There will be no material costs. We estimate roughly that the staff time invested in the project is costs about two thousand dollars to this point. And that's all time that's, that's already been paid because it's just time that we have invested in between other projects. So there's no budget impact to this project at all. And that two thousand dollars relates to the fact that the state pays student allocation for 2015, sixteen to seven thousand, seven hundred and twenty-six dollars. So a couple of thousand dollars invested in this kind of refresh is, even if it were to yield a couple more students either staying in or coming to the district, would have a significant impact. So with that, I want to introduce Mina. He has a presentation that will explain how the logo was developed and go through the process of getting us to the point where we are now.
Well, thank you, Gary. Good morning, board. Superintendent Lori White. I'm going to just start this presentation. It's on the screens. It's in your handout. And really keep it informal. There are two items that we're just going to go over, two phases. The first is going to be why we're, we're doing this and what the emotional language is going to look like. But first, let's talk about the two logos that we have. We have a district logo and a board seal. So right behind you is a circle. That's the board seal. We're not changing that. Okay? That remains unchanged. What we are proposing that we refresh, which is the word of the day, to change or upgrade, is the combo logo that we created back in, I think it was two thousand and seven, two thousand and eight. And we did that because, mainly because of the semantics. People always said, I work for Sarasota County School Board. And when we first started looking at that, we said, we work for Sarasota County Schools or Sarasota County Public Schools. So we had to change what people said, not really what sticker we were going to put on a bus or a car. Well, fast forward seven, eight years later, other districts are utilizing their environmental assets. Okay, we've got the number one beach in the country. You know, we've got things that people come here for when they are on vacation. They are investing their off-time to visit this location. So other districts are using elements, you know, whether it's palm trees, beaches, suns, environmental. So we'll talk about that in a second. So just that distinction, we're going to be looking at the combo logo on the left that's circled in red for the refresh. And moving on, we're going to talk about vocabulary in a second. That's going to be the second phase of this project. What we normally say is important to look at. So if you can take a moment and look at this word cloud and when you're, you're, you're done, hopefully you get an idea where we're going with this. Typical marketing language for a district includes words like high achievement, parent involvement, academic rigor. A quick story I, I ask people is if someone's asking you to work out with them at their gym, do you want to go to a rigorous gym or do you want to go somewhere like maybe after dinner and walk on the beach for your physical exercise? I would want to walk on the beach after dinner. That's just me. Feed the future, words we use. And there's no shame in this. Every district does it. SAT scores exceed state. We are, we are second ranked in student performance. All great, great things. Now, we're going to move on to the next slide, which I think is the salient slide of the two. Successful emotional marketing language as used by some of the schools that we've identified as doing marketing right. They're speaking to the heart of a parent. They're speaking to the aspirations of students. Every parent wants their student to be a good individual. It's, it's much easier to get a parent to agree that we want our kids to have a great character, not necessarily an A grade. So that's kind of the spirit of what we're talking about here. Other schools use character development in other marketing. When they're describing teachers at work, they use the word joy. An interesting one is humility. Leaders have humility because that is a characteristic that every child will need in their future. I can't find a parent that would disagree with that. So those are the kind of themes that we're, we're trying to find that really resonate with parents looking to make decisions on what school they are looking towards putting their child in. So as we move on, the process of the first phase, which is the logo refresh, we had two hundred logos designed and vetted to the top twenty. So, you know, some, most were bad ideas. We, we put together a lot of visuals. Seventy percent of people are visual learners. So we get that. You have to be really, really patient when you're asking for people's opinions. People do have opinions and we want to hear them. We, we finally got down to nine logos and the superintendent's cabinet selected the top nine that would be the nine that we would open up to the community at large. And the survey was opened up from July to August this past summer. Two thousand, that's an impressive number, completed the survey. And happy to report that there was a clear winner, a clear concept. Sixty percent, about twelve hundred people voted for one particular concept. They were allowed to vote for multiples and the people that identified themselves in the survey were allowed to self-identify themselves as multiple and we're going to jump into that next. Okay, so parents, you'll see there's a twenty-five percent scale there, but it does not add up to a hundred because they were allowed to self-identify as others. We had about five hundred or so parents respond to the survey, about less than two percent of students. It was the summer. I, I take it we would get more students if it was during the school year. District employees by large, seventeen, over seventeen hundred district employees responded to the survey. And in the community at large, a little under four hundred people responded to the survey. And then moving on, numbers, you can see number nine was the clear winner with twelve hundred votes. And then number seven was the second-place concept. And that's going to be important for the next slide. You'll see circled in red is number nine. It has a palm tree, a book, a sun and waves. So we've got environmental fused with education. And then number seven was missing the book. However, many reported to us that they liked the simplicity of number seven. So what we did was we went back, it never ends, we refined and refreshed it. So what you're being proposed with today is kind of a fusion between the second and first-place logo that was selected. So we took the good elements of both and we put them together. So what you're looking at here is a stacked vertical version and then next slide, you're going to see a horizontal version. And what this looks like, we've just got a screenshot of our website. There we go. What that would look like on our website. Be the first place that we would refresh the logo. And like Gary had said, letterhead and printed materials that involve cost will be rolled out as needed as the supplies deplete. One thing I do want to point out as impressive that we, that just a happy story from all of this. You certainly get the, I don't like that ones. Okay, and that's great. You just got to move those aside. But a lot of people that responded to the survey that wrote in the comments box, we allowed them to type, which was a, a great therapy technique if you think about it because they get to just throw out their thoughts in a survey. And one of the ones that resonated with us was, thank you. Thank you for letting us weigh in on this decision. Okay? The consensus, the community-building aspect to this, I think, far outweighed the colors and the artistic and, you know, anything that's debatable. I think what's not debatable is the fact that we went out there and we asked the community what they thought. And I think that was respected and I think that was noted and observed and valued. And that's something I just want to throw out there. Moving on, the last slide of this presentation is the next step. So I, I think the next step is going to be up to you to refresh the district logo. The second step proposed would be then to develop a vocabulary with stronger emotional or heart language that we use to appeal to specific target audiences. So that brings me to the end of my portion. If there are any questions, I'd be happy to entertain them.
Well, I just bought my first adult coloring book, but, you know, I, I love color and this is just great. I've been asking for this, how long Lori, since I came on the board, I guess I said. This, I'm embarrassed by this business card, so I'll pay for my own business cards. I'd be happy to do that, but I want new business cards. I think you've done, as usual, a fabulous job. Mina, Gary, kudos, many kudos to you. I, I just, and I like the idea of ref- refreshing the emotional dialogue. I think that really is what we're all about. So I love it.
Thank you, Jane.
Mine's a, a little picky. I'm like, what couldn't we have said A, A or A-plus on there? But, and, and why is there only writing on one side of the book and not both sides? I mean.
That's a great question, Shirley. One of the things that we need to look at, if you look at the seal behind us, there's a lot of detail. And you lose that detail when you shrink it. You, you no longer can read the school board of Sarasota County, Florida. So when you're designing a logo, you want it to work on a billboard or a business card. And it's very important that whether you're embroidering your- And it's very important that, whether you're embroidering or sure, that there's just enough detail to make out the element, but not overdo it from a visual standpoint. So that would be the answer. We don't wanna overcomplicate to communicate a book, so we would only need the three lines on the right.
I just wanna say with all the committees you went through and all the votes and all the rewrites, I'm just amazed it still came out a logo. So congratulations.
No comment. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Great.
I've asked Mr. Hardy to be with us on the next conversation. He, in a previous early discussion about the schedule for the next referendum, the question had come up in terms of what is on that agenda or on that cycle of the November. And so I had tasked Mr. Hardy to determine that and also to get a tentative schedule that would be required for us to meet a November timeline. That had been a request. So the purpose of today's conversation is to deliberate the option of the March 2018 versus November 2016 referendum timeline. And Mr. Hardy is here to answer any questions you might have of him.
I just wanted to remind the audience, since you said that, 'cause I've got a whole bunch of emails that said we were gonna have a referendum vote in March of 16. We never were scheduled to have it in March of 16. The question is, do we do it in November of 16 or March of 18, which is when we would normally do it if the cycle held true?
Right. As a matter of history, since the year 2000, the Board has had five millage referendums. The first one was in July of 2000, which failed. As a result of that failure, the Board went out in March of 2002. There had been some criticism. There were probably a number of criticisms that led to that failure. One was that people didn't like the summer. So the Board decided to pick the month that I think it felt like the most people were available, snowbirds, et cetera, and did March 2002. We've done every four years since then, so March 2006, March 2010, March 2014. The issue now that you all are talking about is whether you wanna stay on that cycle and do March 2018 or do some other time, November 2016. That's certainly the Board's decision. There's no law that requires any particular date. That's up to what the Board decides. Mrs. White just asked me to get the information from you as far as if you chose one versus the other, what would your timeframe be?
I have a question. The referendum we did for 2014 was through 2019, wasn't it? It was for the 15 to 19...
Through June 30, 2018.
Through 2018. If we were to have an election in 2016, that would be for 2019 to 2024?
It would be, it would be picking up, so it would be seamless, from July 1, 2018 through June 30, 2022.
2022. And if by chance it would fail in 2016, I mean, wouldn't there be some expectation of those voters that it would go away, but it would still go on for two years, would it not, regardless?
The voters have approved a referendum through June 30, 2018. If you could hold the next election, either of the dates we're talking about or some other time, it would be made clear that it would be for a continuation of the referendum beginning July 1.
It would be your intention to make it clear.
Well, that's, the ballot language would so state. And regardless of whether it succeeds or fails, the old referendum would continue. I would say that the statute says you can only hold such an election once every 12 months. So if there was a loss, you could come back 12 months and a year later. You couldn't come back the next month or in six months. So, but the referendum, whichever date you would do it, whether it was November 2016 or March 2018, would pick up at the conclusion of the preceding one. So it would start in March, I'm sorry, in July 1, 2018.
But going to Shirley's point, I mean, it's not a precedent. I mean, the county renewed their penny sales tax at special referendum, twice, I might add, well before the first penny expired. They renewed it for the...
Right, right. There's no prohibition from doing it that way.
And I don't think they found, the community found that particularly confusing.
So the time, what I was asked to do was to say, what are the timelines? And you all are very familiar with the March timeline. And this is, you know, you can do it a little bit sooner, but traditionally, the Board would do its resolution in the October timeframe, proceeding March, October, or November. That would go to the Board of County Commission because what you are doing is, according to the statute, directing the Board of County Commission to place something on the ballot. So your resolution directing the County Commission goes October or early November. The Board of County Commission, obviously, we would have a conversation with them. They wouldn't be surprised by this. They would have their resolution in November or December, and that gives the Supervisor of Election sufficient time to create the ballot. And that's how we've done it the last several times. If we wanted to move to a November timeframe, I spoke with Mrs. Dent, asking her, since this was different for for me at least, to prepare, what would the timeframe be? And she said she would need, working backwards, she would need by August 15 of 2016, whatever was going to go on the ballot. So again, working backwards, the Board of County Commission would need to do their resolution in July, meaning the School Board would need a June resolution. So it's about, you know, month one, School Board, month two, County Commission, and then send it to the Supervisor. So if you're looking at November 2016, you're looking at June, School Board, July, County Commission, transmitted to the Supervisor in August for the election in November. If you're looking at the March 2018, you'd be looking at a School Board, October, November, 2017, BCC, November, December, 2017, going to the Supervisor for the March 2018 ballot. So that's your, those are your timeframes.
Bridget?
Well, I think I've already stated my opinion on this. And actually, Art, thank you, because I think some of the things that you brought up help. When I have heard, just in generalities, some of the opposition about changing it to a general versus a special, I think, you know, this election has been four times, five times really, but four times now approved. So I believe the community is knowledgeable, aware of it. If we have the potential now, working off the Advisory Committee and showcasing the value of this referendum dollars, because it's a very valuable part of, you know, their position, moving forward and putting it from an election on a general election and the savings that it could have and it passing, it's a win-win. Also giving us extra time to do, to determine what we wanna do with that money as opposed to a lot, much of a, it seems that it's a bit of a rush as the way it is done now. Second, based on statute, if for any reason it did not pass, we would still be able to hold another election, trying to go back and showcase our need for that referendum dollars. So for me, the voter turnout, the potential, the definite savings, it's a no-brainer in my opinion. So I like, and because 2016 is quickly around the corner, I'm glad we're discussing it now so that if we do decide, we can make a vote, take a vote on it and decide where we go so that we can plan ahead on the campaign to alert the community as to the general election in 2016 for the referendum.
Sure.
Are you supporting the referendum either way?
I am.
Okay, good, good to know. I really think some people are confused by the memo that went out yesterday as to which year we're talking about. I think there could have been some confusion, at least in some of the answers that I got, because it said March. Didn't say March 2016, but it said March versus November. But, you know, I've been heavily involved in the referendum, the actual doing of the campaign and working on raising the money for four times. And I know that we'd have to raise more money next year if we run a campaign to get the attention of the voter. I know there are a lot of other things that are on the ballot that, and likely some local issues that might crowd it. And we have two Board members who are running for reelection and/or a new seat that's open. And we have two years away. And we're also looking at a choice of a superintendent. I still feel the best place for it is to leave it as it was. It was intended to be done at a time when we'd have a dialogue with the community, when we'd be able to have that dialogue front and center without a lot of other uproar and other things getting the attention of the community. With the change now from early voting, which was really the hot thing to do in the early days, to absentee ballots, you know, a lot of people have the opportunity very easily of voting. And I'm hoping that by the next time that we do this, that more people will be using absentee ballots 'cause it is so very convenient. But we're looking at $300,000 versus $160 million. The payback is really very, very good for our community. I'm hoping that it passes. And I think that, you know, I'm certainly gonna do whatever anybody chooses to do or how we end up voting. But for me, I would rather see it stay as a special election in March of 2018.
I don't see that there'd be a problem in it passing if we did it in November. What I see the problem is, is that asking people to, or even asking us to project out where we're gonna be in six years, or even what the legislature will allow us to do. By having it in March, I think it focuses the attention on the School Board and how those dollars are used. So the district knows there is a dialogue held. I mean, I'm already getting fatigued for the November 2016 election. I mean, I've already heard way more than I wanna hear from some of these candidates that are running and that are gonna be on that ballot. And people, I believe, are just gonna shut down. And I think the information we give voters about how we use this referendum is so important to the community that I think spending, and it's not, you know, the district spends that some money to put it out there, but there's other organizations that are out there that are pushing the, is it Committee for Better Schools or? Telling what the community, how we use those dollars. I think that is a good use of our dollars to let the community know how we're doing, how we're spending those dollars. And by holding it out separately, rather than getting it lost up in what's happening on the November 2016 election, because I'm telling you, I'm already focusing out of that one. I mean, it's like, I don't wanna hear anymore. And I just don't think it makes sense to be doing it when it isn't even up yet. I just, I don't know that we need to do it, although I don't think we'd have any problem if we did it in November 20... I think it would pass. The community supports our schools.
Well, I agree with you, Shirley. I think it would pass too, but the question for me is, it's gonna be at the end of the ballot? So you're gonna have all of the candidates that are running for election? Then you're gonna have all of the other ballot initiatives that are on the ballot for 2016? I think the sheriff has something on there and I can't, I can't remember all of the questions, all of the special elections that are on that 2016 ballot.
I think it's unknown exactly at this time. There's certainly talk of a couple of constitutional, Florida constitutional amendments. I believe there's at least the anticipation of one county, and that may be the sheriff when you're talking about. 'Cause I asked that question of Mrs. Dent, what she knew. And of course, she wasn't sure at this point. So that's, I think there's likely to be some ballot initiative, but whether it's one or two or five, I, you know, I don't, I can't tell at this point.
So therefore, I think that the school referendum would get lost, absolutely lost. And it's not that we would lose it, but it would get lost. People wouldn't, people wouldn't go down that far to vote. That's what I'm afraid of. There is vote, you know, an undervoting on amendments that, you know, some care, where it can be somewhere between 15 and 20% of undervotes on those amendments, 'cause people vote for president sometimes and don't vote for anything else. But I just think it would get lost in the campaign. That's what I'm worried about, is raising money and having to raise double the amount of money we normally have to raise when we're a single issue and having to raise the money in the community for the campaign and getting our message out. Because, you know, there's a turnover of probably 30% in residents. 15% a year is what the Supervisor estimates in voter turnover in this county. People come and go. And some die, unfortunately. But there's about a 15% turnover a year in voter rolls. So how would we get our message out? We went to every school. We went to, did probably 100, 125 different speaking engagements. We're not gonna be able to do that probably as easily with all these other candidates speaking to those organizations. So the campaign will be much more difficult. So that's primarily why I believe it's better to leave it as it is. And now to finish, I would say that March, it stands alone. You either vote it up or you vote it down. And you have absentee ballots that you can use. They're readily accessible. That's how I vote now, from absentee ballots. And if you look at the number of people that are here in March and you look at the ones that are here in November, I believe there are more people here in March than there are in November. So that's why I, I'm in favor of leaving it as is. Why would you, why would you want to change something that's a winning ratio? Why would you want to change that? Especially since I'm student-focused and I know what this money means to our school district. I know what it means to the education of our children. I know the programs that we'd have to cut if we didn't, if this wouldn't pass. I wouldn't wanna take that chance. I don't, can't see why. If you're gonna vote for it, you'll vote in March or you'll vote in November? If you're not, you'll vote in March or you'll vote in November? I don't...
I just have two comments. First one is on the email that we all got yesterday. And it's one of the reasons that I've said a long time ago that I'm not running again. I am so aggravated over this politicizing of every single thing that comes along, not to mention it wasn't accurate. So that's the first thing I wanted to say. Second part of it is I disagree with what you're saying about the timing. There's a reason we have it in March and not on November. It's because the same reason the county has a sales tax renewal and an extension of the renewal, because election 101 will tell you, if you want something to pass, you put it on a special referendum, have a special vote for it. Because more people will vote yes than will come out and vote no on a single item. And I don't think any of you honestly would argue with me that that isn't correct. So if we really wanna know what the public thinks, I think we ought to have it on a general election. Caroline, there may be more people here in March than there are in November, but I doubt there's more registered voters here in March than in November. I think the registered voters are the people that are full-time residents, and I think they're here in March and they're here in November. But I disagree with having it in March. I've always disagreed with having it in March. I understand why we have it in March. And obviously, the majority of the Board is gonna decide why we have it in March. But I just think the truth needs to be out there, why we have it in March. Now, there is part of the, part of the argument that since we had it in March going out initially, sooner or later, we've had to do what we're trying to, or at least talking about, contemplating doing it now, where you could, we could never wait four years and then have it in a November election because we'd miss a school year worth of referendum dollars. But, so there is some truth to the fact that we've had it in March because that's when the four years renewed and we didn't have a November election previous to that. But I tell you, the reason you have a special election is because you want something to pass. Bridget?
So I pulled up some statistics, and I think this is very important. And just kind of in recapping of what I heard, it sounds like a majority of you believe it would still even pass in November. And to me, $80 is a lot of money, but $300,000 is a lot of money. It's a lot of money. I don't care. And this isn't, and these are tax dollars. And I just, to me, it's baffling that if I hear from people... It's a lot of money. I don't care, and this isn't, and these are tax dollars, and I just, to me, it's baffling that if I hear from people here, that they say they still think it'll pass, but we would still put it on a March election. I don't get that. Second, um, I agree with Mr. Kovach is that the voter turnout last twenty fourteen was fifteen point six three percent in the twenty fourteen March referendum, and in two thousand six, I have twenty-five percent. But in general elections for, I have the Sarasota Soil Water Group, that was forty-two point five percent. I have a constitutional amendment, which was a bottom, bottom of the ballot, fifty-four point four five percent uh voted on that. And a county charter amendment, two thousand six, fifty-three percent voted on that. So I think, again, if we, this is what I I get a bit frustrated about, because I see the good that happens in this district, and I know all of you do too. And when we get criticized, it's sometimes frustrating, because some people may not know or see it all. But if we know why it's on a March election, because we believe we just know it's gonna pass, but yet it's been successful for us year after year uh, since two thousand two, but yet we have the opportunity to put it on a general election, save three hundred thousand dollars, and most of us believe it'll still pass. I don't understand why we would even contemplate not doing this.
Shirley.
How much would it cost?
I I get, I get frustrated too when when people don't understand what it takes involved when you're working on passing a referendum. When they've never done it. Uh, I I know those of us who are talking about leaving it in in it where it is have all put in hours working, telling the community about the referendum, what the referendum does for us. And it's a lot harder, I've been there in a November election too. It's a lot harder to get people's attention in November, to tell them. That's the point I'm saying, that in March, it gets our story out. People are listening in March. But but it frustrates me to say, well, I don't understand. No, you don't understand, because you've never been there. You've never been at the table helping us pass a referendum.
Caroline. Anybody else?
Thank you so much for coming. I appreciate it. Well, I heard three votes for leaving it where it is, I believe.
Well, there's, I I mean, there's no vote. I mean, you all have had a discussion. The next step would be for the board to pass a resolution, whenever the board's gonna pass a resolution, to direct the county commission to put it on the ballot. And when that would happen depends on when you want the election to be, obviously.
Could you tell me what the cost, this is what I was gonna ask. What is the, I mean, we can't put it on the ballot in November for nothing. There must be a cost to that too. There's no cost.
Um, um.
Unless there is, unless we tell the supervisor of elections at a later date for any reason and it goes to a second ballot, then we would be in charge of paying for that extra paper, but from a cost standpoint, all precincts are already prior set up, so there's zero cost.
So the only cost would be in raising the funding to get the message out regarding the um referendum.
And you're wanting to know what the next issue would, I mean, I mean, if if.
I thought we were gonna have our school board attorney answer that question.
Well, I mean, I think the, what triggers the election is the board passing a resolution directing the Board of County Commission to put it on the ballot. So, I mean, that can be done at any time. I mean, I wouldn't think you would today pass a resolution saying that it goes on either in November sixteen or
Right.
or March eighteen. I mean, it would be closer to the run-up, so I don't know that there's any action that needs to be, there's certainly nothing that needs to be done today to accomplish any of this.
And I didn't sense a will of the board to do anything diff- I said vote the will of the board. There is no will of the board to do anything different. So I don't know where.
Yeah, I would, I would put this out there as a, as a discussion, and it can always come back. Uh, but, you know, based on what you all have said, it sounds like there's a majority of the board that wants to do March twenty eighteen. If that's the case, then you go with the timeline that I suggested earlier with the October twenty seventeen resolution. If at some point that changes and a majority of the board wants to do it at a different time, then you have to kind of back up from when you want the election to do your resolution to get it to the B C C so that they can do theirs. But, I mean, regardless of which of the two options you would have coalesced around today, there really isn't a formal action that needs to be taken, you know, until next summer at the earliest, even if you went up to November twenty sixteen.
Okay, thank you, Art.
Last item is legislative platform. I don't feel like y'all need to take the full thirty minutes.
And, you know, although this um, the board will want to coalesce around their um legislative platform earlier than is typical, um, because of a little bit earlier legislative session. So I think um we could postpone this for a little bit, or do you want to just push forward?
Um, I I I've made a few notes. I, on on the constitutional authority, I think the I think if that's the heading, the the first bullet point, I think is too wordy and goes off in another direction. And um, uh, I think the allow the school districts to the local agreements with the dual enrollment, I think kind of duplicates what we're talking about stabilizing local funding, the second thing there. So I'm thinking maybe we could drop the first bullet and the second bullet, um, because I think the second bullet is is down there when we're talking about the funding for the, or dual enrollment, or if we could add it down there for dual enrollment. And down on the the third section on the accountability, the first bullet, support a workable timeline for implementation of common core standards. We could probably get rid of that first sentence, because that's kind of water over the dam or under the dam or wherever it went. Um, but I think we should still keep the second sentence in there, ensure the state assessments. Um, I think the require uh end of course exams for non-FCAT, we can strike that, because that was deleted. Um, and then the third bullet about the equitable funding for the disabled students and English language learners, we might want to put something in there about restoring those dollars for adults with disability for the S E T programs.
Okay, can I tell you what I think?
No.
I think all we need.
No, I'm sorry.
Be quiet. I think all we need is the black bullets, ensure constitutionally stabilize the school funding, support and accountability and evaluation system, and that's all we need. We don't need any of the bullets, any of them.
Oh, I see.
Just bold statements like that, because nobody reads all this stuff.
Well, and I agree. I think we all talked about trying to simplify it to make it easy, to make it strong, so I'll definitely confer there. One thing I, and Lori, we were talking about this yesterday, I think, I'm getting my days mixed up. But from a, from a um assessment and evaluation standpoint, trying to put the strength, power and control back and make sure it maintains in the district side from the teacher evaluation standpoint, do you have any feedback or anything on that? Because I think that's very important and.
Um, there, right now, there's a state board rule that will set the cut points for next year's teacher evaluation of those that have BAM scores. So it's for about a third of our teachers. They're setting the cut scores for the student growth portion. Um, we could have a bullet saying to um, at least during this transition, that we delay the implementation of that. You've got a new assessment, so delay the imposition of this state-driven cut scores for that. Um, that's the only place where they really dictate that decision-making process. And it's not the total evaluation, because we set the cut scores for the determination when you add the pride, but they do have it for the third of the student growth. Though I think the F S B A has a similar kind of suggested um part of their um two thousand sixteen legislative platform that would delay that. So you might want to consider that.
Do, and well, and then my other question would be, is does that kind of go back to the local control? You know, so I I I think that's an important aspect, maybe, that we have on there, but I agree with keeping it simple. But on the back of a mind of us agreeing, I mean, if we're gonna go back and do a a printout, I think, we could.
Should be simple and not in education speak, because that was what I got for several people, is try to keep the education jargon down, because they legislators.
To be careful, though, I think the drill downs are important for us to prove as a board that we all agree on, so that when we're out there talking to, you know, a local delegation or whomever, that we know these are the areas that we all agree on, and but from the simplicity standpoint, from a marketing standpoint, maybe not do those bullets when we go with whatever printout we do. Does that, agree? Yeah.
I'm concerned about still changing our name back from college to institute. And I tried to check on some folks down south in the big districts to find out what their thinking was. Um, and I don't know if we need to explicitly mention that or not. I guess we can talk about it at the consortium, but.
I would leave it alone.
Okay.
And then if it gets crossed by it, it's like hitting you in the head by two by four, right? Right.
But that is an important thing.
No, I would leave it alone, because it might not come up, and if you bring it up, you're asking for trouble.
I think if it doesn't come up, one more year, we're okay.
What, we're not, I I, I think our le- our delegation needs to know that they were opposed to it.
Yeah.
Maybe not what we send to F S B A, but I think what we bring to our delegation. So is this, yeah, I don't think we necessarily, but I think what we tell our local delegation, I think should be more explicit about uh, you know, keeping it as the S C T now rather than the institute.
So just to summarize some of the, what's been said, so, see if I get it. For kind of a public document, you're considering just these um highlighted three statements. But for your talking points, when you're working with legislative um local, our local delegation, you'd like to agree upon some bullets.
Yes, yes.
So I've got that down, good. So then let's talk about the bullets. Uh, let's go one more time, and I've taken a few notes, but I'm not sure. Um, I caught everything to see if I've got agreement on the bullets. Um, so under the first um, and it point, the first bullet, Jane, what was your comments? Or that you were deleting that one, or what was the deal?
The first bullet under item number one?
First bullet under the fir- item number one.
Um, I didn't make a comment about that.
I did.
Oh, it was Shirley. Then what was your comment?
I I'd delete the first two, two small bullets on that, but you know what? I I'm, I I kind of agree with what Caroline said. That in of itself stands alone. Or accept the other two, although the bottom two ones, I don't think hurt. The final authority to grant or reject charter schools and that the non-compliance for the class size amendments.
These are your talking points, though. This is not the public document. These are things you're gonna have as reminders of what you'd like to um focus on when you're in discussions with legislators.
See, we've already agreed on the, on the points, Shirley. The bullet, the bullet points, but now what we're trying to do is agree on
Talking point.
the talking points, the little bullets under there, if we all agree and we're all on the same page. Okay?
Well, I'm thinking that third large bold thing might somehow incorporate the ensure the the assessments are aligned valid and fair, rather than adequately supported by the district.
I would, I would not be opposed to putting a a.
Combine those two statements somehow, or?
I would, I would have a separate line, I'm talking, because this can't call it a bullet. I would have an except, a separate.
Bold line?
Bold line, thank you, Lori.
Or just so we know what we're talking about.
Yes, a bold line there to something that you said, delaying something or other.
Well, that's pretty specific, and I think it would not communicate to enough people what it wa- what it is. I think that is a talking point.
Yeah, okay.
Um, I don't think it's a bold. So I think what Shirley was um alluding to, that rather saying, and it might be stronger, that support and accountability evaluation system that is valid, fair, reliable and fully funded. Or, you know, does that, if we change, can be adequately supported by the district? What she's saying is take some of the pieces that were the talking points and move it up into the bold.
Yeah.
Does that seem?
That, that, that's what I'm saying, yes.
Okay, is that, it, so that is.
I was just gonna add another one, do the same thing.
Fair, reliable and fully funded?
Yeah.
Okay, so I'll modify the bold, the third bold. So let's go back just so I can kind of, do you see, let me do it this way. Do you see any under the first bold, do you see any bullets that you would like to not have as talking points?
Well, I think the the the, the first one, I think, is just ki- kind of mumble jumbo and and the first one is there, and the, and the second one,
Second one.
I I think it get, they kind of say, the public would go, what are you talking about?
Well, remember, this is for you, but I, so I was hearing, delete the first bullet.
This is for us to use. It's, it's, it's not going on anything. It's just for us to use as a guide when talking to our legislators. It's, it's no big deal, that we, that we agree on.
But if it's something you don't understand, or you're not clear enough to be able to speak, then maybe it doesn't need to be there either, so I mean.
I mean, I understand, but it's like, it, it, try to tell somebody that, oh, yeah, you know, we should be able to calculate and to come up with what the cost for dual enrollment should be and and I don't think that's under the operating and the control more than the funding.
So one thought is, um, I'm hearing is to move that bullet point to the stabilized school funding.
Yeah.
It's related to funding more. Okay, so I'll move that down. So that leaves the next, those two bullets that are under that first bold area.
Yes.
Is that, uh, both of those are talking points you'd like to include?
Yes.
Then in, um, we've got stabilized school funding and enhanced local discretion and expenditures. Um, we've added one bullet, the second bullet from above, and then we've had these four, so what are your thoughts on that?
Yeah, three.
Oh, I'm sorry. Three, there were four, including the one you just added.
It's very easy to confuse me.
I know, myself included.
And those are still valid.
So any opposition to anything you see there? So then moving on to the final.
Well, another, another funding issue, i- I think, is is that restoring the funding for the students with disabilities at the college.
So if I make a bullet to restore um the grant dollars for the Adults for Disabilities program? Okay, so I'll put that as a, as a fifth bullet.
Mm-hmm.
And then let's look at the last um bold statement, which we've modified slightly, and look at those and see, we've already determined that we've kind of incorporated the first one into the statement, so I'll delete that one. The second one really has been changed in terms of that. I will add a a bullet in delaying the implementation of the state cut scores for student growth component. I'll add that as a bullet
Mm-hmm.
down there. Um, and, you know, there have been some more assessments, assessments in terms of a new alternative assessment for E S E, and there's a new assessment called the Yda Assessment for, so they've really, um, there are more appropriate assessments now that are going to be implemented this coming year. So I don't think that um bullet is applicable as much anymore.
Okay.
So, um.
Take out number three?
Yes, and um, and I, and I think you might want to keep the other bullet, particularly as it applies to more of paper-based options, so that if we increase the, our availability to make those decisions, um, that has to do with um lessening the negative impact on instructional time perhaps. But there's other strategies that we, that I could help inform the board of, here are the the strategies we believe that would give us assistance um, if they have some flexibility in how we implement the testing that would have less of a negative impact on instructional time.
What about clarifying um parents' roles in 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 opt-out and in what what we can do with that? Because I mean, I, our hands are kind of tied, but parents still think they can come to us, but it's the legislature.
So you're gonna take, this is your legislative platform. Are you gonna take that to the legislature and tell the parents?
I don't know. I'm just throwing it out there.
Well, it's written broadly, so if we get more ideas or more information, I can certainly provide additional talking points of what would be of assistance. So I think that's, at this point, it's hard to know exact, you have to be really understanding of what it is you want to request. So we can certainly add talking points easily, um, as we get more information and thoughts. So I will modify this um and send it out. If anyone sees a problem, if you could let me know, um, and then we'll. Um, and then we'll look at this, uh, this, the complete list would be for you and as a tool. Um, and then we'll use those bullets or the bold statements as the official legis, two thousand sixteen legislative platform. You know, I think, you know, I think we're good.